Okay, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up. The Wednesday Mashpee Nin- sorry, Wednesday, April 19th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board. Today's date is Wednesday, April 19th, 2023. It's the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. We're holding the meeting at the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, North Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. And the time is 6:15. We have quorum. And we're going to have to open by roll call vote since one of our members is remote. So by roll call vote, the chair is opening up the meeting. Karen Faulkner, present?
Present.
John Pallone?
Present.
Mary Wagan, present. Just to let everybody know, Dennis Belzerini is en route. And we have sent messages to the other members of the Planning Board. Okay. So I just want to remind everyone, welcome everybody here today. Remind everybody that we're being recorded and broadcast live on local channel 18. We're also being streamed live on the town of Mashpee website at www.mashpema.gov/channeleighteen. I'd like to invite everyone to rise with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to let Karen start it off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are several sets of minutes. January 25th, 2023, March 1st, 2023, March 8th, 2023, March 15th, 2023, and March 29th, 2023. I've read them all and I have no amendments.
And just a reminder to the board, I have not prepared the March 29th minutes. We'll need to put that on the next agenda.
I have not read the March 29th minutes. We'll strike that from the list. So it's January 25th, March 1st, March 8th, and March 15th. And March 8th was our site visit.
Yes.
And you wrote that, did you not?
Yes.
Yes.
So I take a motion to approve all the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve all the minutes as presented.
Except March 29th.
Except March 29th.
March 29th, the site visit.
John, by necessity, would you second that?
Second.
Any discussion? By roll call vote, Karen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mary Wagan, aye. Thank you. Okay. So the next item is the Local Comprehensive Plan Update. And I was wondering if we should start that with the summary of the Public Opinion Survey and Community Engagement Workshops and Events. I'm going to let you go for it and then I have a little bit of analysis on the survey.
Okay, sounds good. So in the board's packet tonight is, I believe, every written summary from every engagement event we participated in throughout spring 2022 and into the fall of 2022, including the early January virtual workshop held in 2023. Additionally, I've prepared for the packets. Let me find it. So this is going to be all kind of leading up towards a conversation with the board relative to the goals, policies, and actions that I'd like to kind of get working on in preparation for our May 17th meeting with Weston and Sampson. But after going through all of the engagement and having the opportunity to kind of review some of these notes, I've had a few primary takeaways myself from the process. Notably, people's interest in protecting and preserving water.
Right into the mic, yep.
And ensuring that residents of the town have access to attainable and affordable housing, preservation of community character, small-town character, maintaining its rich cultural history and heritage, strong and vibrant local economy, and Mashpee's identity is being firmly rooted in its woodlands, its rivers, and its water bodies. And so I've tried to distill what I've learned through that process into, A, the vision statement being one, draft proposed goals, policies, and actions for your consideration. And then I've also started reworking the survey results a little bit just in how the charts were displayed, which I have available on the computer if we want to project any of it. But I wanted to make sure that the graphic visuals were more, most appropriate for the questions that were being asked. So we're mostly looking at bar charts, pie charts, and stacked bar charts. When you look at the Survey Monkey output, you're going to note that they don't look great because of just the way they're automatically formatted. So I'm working with Weston and Sampson right now to make sure that the charts are legible. And so we're through most of that work now. But what I would like to do in preparation for May 17th is, I guess, facilitate a discussion on key takeaways from the board's perspective. I've reworked the draft vision statement from the first discussion we had back in January based on the board's comments. And in the packet as well is the proposed goals, policies, and actions as a first stab at things. I wanted to note, and I was looking at the goals, policies, and actions that we proposed. And I think there's one section that's a little light and I think is going to be important for the board to focus on, and that's the economic development portion. I think there were some of the findings in the conversations I had with business owners at the coffee hours didn't make themselves, find their way into the the goals, policies, and actions proposed in there. So I have thoughts in that regard and think that we can bolster that.
So I'm going to use that as a springboard?
Yes.
Because I looked at, and I think that you should resend all the things that you sent me, all the charts, all the results from all the workshops. Send them out to all the board members again and get them posted. Make sure they're posted on the website. Because I found that too, that while we have an engaged business community. Hi, Dennis.
Evan, did it send me?
That is my fault, Dennis, I'm sorry.
I thought it was at 6:30.
Well, you're on time then.
Okay.
You're early.
I just got out of the shower too. I just, oh, me?
You look great. So we were just talking, just started talking about the LCP stuff. And I did kind of notice that the business community is engaged in everything that goes on in town. And I don't know if, when they came to our sessions, they were talking about water or housing or, but very few comments about economic development. But I did glean some things. And I brought this, again. This is the visitor guide and community directory that the Chamber puts out every year. And it has the town seal and it has about change. So I thought that I'm going to hand this off to Evan. And just, I think that we should give it to Weston and Sampson and have them read what the Chamber's new executive director wrote, what the superintendent of schools, Patricia DeBoer, wrote. The whole summary about the town seal is really good. And the piece by tribal chief, sorry, tribal chairman Brian Whedon is really good. So I think if that stuff could make its way into the package of information they're considering. I did do a little bit of an analysis of the survey myself. And it's, I'm going to give it to Evan, but it's draft. And one of the big things I did was I took all the comments, you know, the comments that are others, and I tried to sort those out to see if there was any trends. And so when you look at the survey results, I don't know if you want to, I'm sorry, I probably would shut off Zoom if I went to put this on. So the survey results, gosh, how many questions were there, 52? I forget.
I think 50 or 51.
And there was over 600 responses. Right?
620.
Okay, there was 620 responses. And question one was, how do you rate the quality of life in Mashpee? And which was amazing, and I know it's people who are engaged, right, in town happenings, but 90% of respondents said good or very good. That's a big deal. So that must be the green and the blue. So almost 38% said very good and 53% said good. And in the next question, what do I do, just scroll down?
Should be able to scroll down.
Oh. Oops. And the next question, in your experience, has your quality of life in Mashpee improved, stayed the same, or gotten worse? 57%, the largest group, said stayed the same. 22% said improved, 20% said got worse. So if it changed, it was like the same number, percentage of people said it got better or worse, but the vast majority said stayed the same. So I looked at the comments, you know, there was an other spot. And a lot of people who said it's gotten better actually wrote, like, talked about how things got worse, you know, like it wasn't an exact matchup of this 22%, 56%, and 20%, but it was still interesting. The number one reason why the quality of life in Mashpee improved, and this is very interesting, is goods and amenities, things like restaurants, shopping, entertainment, and services. So you see that economic development piece is right there. What makes people feel better about living here? Well, when there's good, quality restaurants, shopping, entertainment, and services. So I thought that was really interesting. After that, it goes current development and growth patents. These are things that people like. Mashpee groups, social activities, the senior center, library, recreational activities, followed by natural beauty and environmental quality. These are things that feel, they feel their life has gotten better because of, and Mashpee Commons.
So what I get out of that is people 50 and older answered the survey and there's not one of them saying a good school system.
I can actually tell you, I looked at this today. More than 50% of the respondents are, were over 60 years old or seven years, over 60. Only 25% or so were younger than that, and it was all above 50. Very few people less than 50 years old answered the survey.
That surprises me.
Now, when you go to reasons why quality has gotten worse, why the quality of living here has gotten worse, the number one reason with 65 respondents said poor water quality. So that's a huge problem on people's mind. The next one with 41 respondents was traffic congestion or speed, road rage. You know, people answer those free-flowing questions in different ways. But those 41 that were kind of related to traffic. 36 over development and anticipated development patterns. Then that was followed by high taxes, cost of living, too crowded, too many people. And then it just starts to dwindle down. So I thought that was, that was interesting. Now, let's see what the next one was. The next one was about, why did you want to buy here? Why did you want to move here or live here? And the number one factor, which tied with the second factor, was air and water quality, beaches and ponds, followed very closely by quality of public services. And those are things like police, fire, schools, senior center have a master human services. So I remember we moved here because, you know, one of the factors was the schools. Followed very closely by tranquility, natural beauty, small-town lifestyle, town character, open space, access to healthcare, and taxes. And the next question was, which of the following are the most serious problems facing Mashpee today? Here in the order of being ranked, the biggest problem is quality of open waters, groundwater, and drinking water, followed by traffic flow, cost of living, then loss of open space, followed by climate change, solid, then solid waste, trash management. I thought that was pretty interesting that that ranked in the top 10 because it's kind of like you're throwing things out and it's, you know, you don't see it, you don't care about it anymore. But 66% of the people said that was serious or very serious, followed by pedestrian and bicycle safety, attainable housing, population changes, and evolving town character. That was 57% of the people said that one of the top 10 problems was evolving town character. So then there's some more, then there's like some nice and easy ones. That's about affordable housing. Do you believe Mashpee has a need for more attainable, affordable, and workforce housing? 70% of the respondents said yes. And then this is probably something that Evan and Weston and Sampson are going to have to kind of look at a little bit, what type of housing? There's definitely support for multifamily. 50% of the respondents said multifamily. 50% of the respondents said single-family. 40% said duplexes, 34% condominium, 28% said assisted living.
Said what?
Assisted living. And then you have to read the comments. Some of them, 31 respondents said no more housing at all, which I thought was, you know, for a free-flowing, no-direction kind of open answer, I was like, oh. That was.
Did anybody say zoning changes?
We haven't gotten there yet. I'm not, yeah. Then question seven, this starts to get a little complicated. To what extent do you support or oppose the following? So what that was showing me, this is the housing stuff, you kind of have to study it a little bit. But 76% of people sport, support, or strongly support redevelopment of existing buildings and properties into housing. 70, almost 77% of the respondents support redevelopment into existing, of existing buildings and properties into housing. So I thought that was interesting. And these are kind of like the top eight. 65% of respondents strongly support, or strongly support the requirement of developers of new housing to dedicate a portion of those units to low, moderate-income housing. 62% said they support, or strongly support, the removal of barriers that would encourage a mixture of commercial and residential uses in commercial districts. So Evan called that one right. 60% said that height and density provided, okay, that they would support height and density provided a portion of the units were attainable, affordable, or workforce. And almost 60% would support, or strongly support, town programs to encourage more ADUs. So I thought that was really interesting. And then just over half, 51%, support, or strongly support donation of town-owned land to nonprofit organizations for the construction of affordable housing projects. Then you get into, remember the question about where would you allow or support multifamily housing? Everywhere in town or only in specific areas? And this is super interesting. Almost 50%, it was 49.7% they strongly support, support, or strongly support allowing multifamily housing in some areas of town. Almost 35% would support it town-wide. And I, for something that dramatic, 35% of respondents, that's actually pretty high. Do you know what I mean? Because that's a, that's a big change for a town.
Yeah.
All right. So yeah, that was, you won't buy that.
On this affordable housing, did anybody say de-restricted or just?
No, because we had it attainable, affordable, and workforce.
Okay.
We'll narrow down that funnel through the Housing Production Plan process, which is up and coming.
And then is this? I'm on question, then I skipped, I skipped to question 15. Forgive me. And you're going to put this on?
We're working on a full update and overhaul to the planmashpee.com website because it hasn't been updated in a while, so we're going to bring it up to speed.
This one says, to what extent would you support or oppose the following to protect natural resources? 76% of respondents support or strongly support prohibition on new construction in the flood zone. 79% support or strongly support stricter stormwater management regulations and enforcement of stormwater violations. So improve stormwater, that's great. 72% of respondents support or strongly support prohibition on the use of chemical fertilizers. 71% support the prohibition on the use of pesticides and insecticides. And then 73% support, or strongly support landscaping requirements to encourage native vegetation. So DNR called that right. And then the next one is about the tree bylaw. Would you support the adoption of a town-wide tree bylaw that would serve to protect mature trees on residential and commercial lots? And/or define standards for replacing those trees if removal was necessary? 54, almost 55% said yes.
Do we still have a tree warden?
We have a tree warden. It's the conservation agent, but he's a tree warden for properties that are in conservation jurisdiction. So he doesn't serve in that capacity townwide.
And question 17, would you support the town budgeting for a street tree program to plant and maintain street trees? Almost 63% said yes. And then I'm going to end it on question 18 because we have a Mashpee mermaid in the room. Select the water-based activity that you utilize the most. 73% of respondents said swimming. Okay, so I'll send you my raw data on this so you, you and Weston and Sampson can double-check it.
Cool.
So, Mary, excuse me, so Evan, there was roughly 600 respondents, is that right, 650-ish?
620.
620.
Okay. So that's about 4% of the residents?
Can you repeat what John's saying?
620 is what percent?
4% of the residents.
I know a lot of people say that 620 with whoa when they think about it. But a 620, you know, in consideration of responses and other planning processes I'm seeing, I'm very satisfied with the 620 response rate. I know it, the bar is low, but I think it was quite successful.
Okay. So that's food for thought. And maybe Evan, you know those responses from all the workshops? Maybe you can print them out for everybody and they can come in and?
They're in your packets.
I can't find them.
Here. You may have mine.
I see the one from, I see the screenshots. Oh, the takeaways, yes. Remember you sent me the Excel sheets? From all?
From the survey?
No, from all the workshops.
I sent you these write-ups from the Word documents. This is them.
Right, but then you, there's Excel sheets with everybody's raw answers from the visioning workshop.
Oh.
Those.
I, yes, I recall.
Yeah, because they're colorful and Weston and Sampson.
Those were Weston Sampson work products.
Remember the workshops that we had? They boiled them down and formatted them. And actually, when you, you look at them again and again and again and again, it makes setting your goals really easy. Because a lot of people actually wrote goals in there. And if you sort them by chapter, it's, the goals start to really kind of come together.
It gives us a good direction.
It really, it really did. I mean, there was a lot of engaged people at those workshops. I'm sorry, I'm going to say it out loud, very intelligent and well-educated. They were saying stuff, I'm like, that, whoever said that should join the Planning Board.
I'll get all of these materials up on planmashpee.com. It'll take a week or two to get it up to speed. But we'll get it all, it's now time to put everything out there for consumption.
All right, so do you, and then there's, then there's some major takeaways in our packet. Two, which I think are, I think they're fine, I think they're fine, I just kind of, I concentrated on the, on the goals, working on the goals.
So the, the write-ups of the, like, specific events are verbatim how people wrote on flip charts? So that's all the data collected on flip charts, just in a Word document format?
It's excellent. It's, you know, it, it takes a little bit of time to read through them, but it shows the variety of, of comments and what's on people's mind. And they hit every single chapter we're going to do in the LCP. When we asked them, you know, just, just open question, what would you improve in Mashpee, or what's a weakness, or what's a strength? There wasn't one chapter of the LCP that wasn't kind of mentioned. You know, we didn't give them the list of the chapters, they just innately knew. You know, like, as a group, this town is engaged and, hi, we started at six, I'm sorry. You could have, yeah, Evan was going to fill in for you. Are you guys comfortable looking at the vision statement again?
Yeah, yeah.
So, John, do you have the vision statement handy?
I do not.
Oh. Evan, how would I show it on the screen?
I believe I have it up.
John, can you get to a computer and look at your packet or can you see our screen? Oh, we're going to share the.
Is it in the, is it in the packet?
I emailed it to you this afternoon.
Yep, you got an email this afternoon, but we're going to share screen with you so you'll be able to see it, okay?
See, John?
Oh, can you zoom in?
I'm getting there.
Can you enlarge it?
What do you mean you guys can't read that from the back of the room? It's a vision test. Okay, while he's doing that, I'm going to read it, okay? Do you want me to, you want me to copy this? It's a vision test or a vision statement, ha, ha, ha. Okay. This is what it says. This is the draft. Mashpee is a vibrant, diverse community rooted in an ancient and proud past. Our vision for Mashpee's future requires recognition of past injuries and traumas inflicted upon the Mashpee Wampanoag, the original stewards of this land, while nurturing the shared values of all residents for a better and more united future. Our vision relies on a sustainable combination of natural resource protection and balanced economic growth to ensure Mashpee's small-town character and cultural heritage are maintained and reflected in all land-use decisions. We wish to be dynamic enough to retain Mashpee's cultural identity while boldly meeting the challenges of the future to ensure enhanced prosperity and opportunity for all residents by restoring the health of Mashpee's waterways, while also providing the housing and shelter for residents in need and for workforce, oh, excuse me, and for the workforce who sustain Mashpee's economy. We envision a future where our children, teenagers, and young adults may realize their maximum potential, where new families can sustainably and affordably establish themselves in grow, and where our older citizens can comfortably and safely enjoy the fruit of their life's labors. We envision a future where intergovernmental relations between the town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe are productive, efficient, and fruitful. By working together to heal the waters that we have polluted, the housing stock that has been neglected, and the ecosystems that have been disturbed, Mashpee will chart a bright and promising future for generations to enjoy.
Are you there?
Very good.
Are we close?
It's good, it's very good.
I have a few wordsmithings.
That's wordsmith.
Okay.
I'm listening.
In line three, line three... Okay, I wanna, I want to remove the word "economic".
Line three?
Line three.
Economic.
You just want balanced growth?
So it says, um, instead of saying balanced economic growth, just balanced growth? Because economic growth, I, I interpret that as businesses, but just growth would mean population development and economic development. Do you know what I mean? Like, don't just narrow it down to economic, just growth.
We're okay with that? I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay. Mary, uh, on line two, you said, "Future requires recognition of past injuries, the word is injustices there, do you not like the word injustice?"
Did I say, did I say it wrong?
Yeah, you said injuries.
Injustices is good, right?
Yes, I like that.
Thank you. I like injustices too, sorry about that. In line three, I wanted to add "natural beauty" after "small-town character". Oh no, line two. Uh, so it would be, I'm sorry, "Our vision relies on sustainable combination of natural resource protection and balanced growth."
Third line?
Line two, honey, not line three, sorry, I didn't mean to say...
This is worth it.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I, I want line two to change. "Strike economic growth to ensure Mashpee's small-town chara- character, comma, natural beauty, comma, and cultural heritage." I wanted to add in "natural beauty".
Does that come first and then "small-town character"?
I wanted "small-town character, comma, natural beauty, comma, and cultural heritage." A lot of people in the workshops talked about natural beauty, so I thought that was important. So, I, to sentence number four, I wanted to add "preparing for climate change after waterway", let's see.
What line?
Well, I have it as line four, but I think I was off when I did that, da, 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 da.
Yeah.
I think it's line three.
Climate change.
So, "For all residents, by restoring the health of Mashpee's waterway, zah, preparing for climate change while also providing the housing and shelter for residents in need of workforce and s- who sustain Mashpee's economy." Would, I think we should do something in here about climate change.
I, I, I don't think this is the sentence to put it in.
Okay.
So let's try and figure out where to put it in.
All right.
Um, 'cause the, the sentence here is trying to recognize, or it's trying to strike a balance between, um... It's recognizing the fact that, uh, the, we have work to do to restore the health of the waterways, but we also have, uh, a competing...
Okay.
...necessity for housing. And we want to be bold enough to meet both of those challenges.
All right, strike that, strike the climate change thing, it's not gonna fit in.
So, I, I, what I can do is...
We have a separate sentence.
On May seventeenth, let me work on a climate change sentence to bring back in here and, and present it to you on May seventeenth. If that's okay.
Yep, thank you. And then I'm still looking for a phrase that has to do with older adults. You've got children, teenagers, young adults, new families, older adults, oh, but I'm middle-aged.
No.
I'm looking for something middle-aged.
You're at your potential.
I don't know. I'm still looking. We're, we're, we're always, uh, we're like the middle child, we're always forgotten.
It, it addresses both, young, new families and older.
It, older adults, but I'm not an older adult, I'm middle-aged.
Well, you're...
I'm not an older adult, not yet. 'Cause older adults is retired people.
I wanna avoid listing everyone, you know?
Well, you could forget about me, it's okay. Let's put our thinking cap on about that.
Why not adult citizens? Or something, I mean, why do you have to di-
Ad, older adults is special.
Can I just say, can we say this?
Hmm?
We can, "Where new families can sustainably and affordably establish themselves and grow, and where our, where our middle-aged and older citizens..."
Yep.
I mean, kinda, but it's, it's a little bit different, because in this sentence, though, I mean, we're really trying to establish that Mashpee is composed of many residents who have, uh, contributed to society in a number of ways and are here to enjoy the fruit of their life's labors. Folks in their middle age are generally still in that process, and I think a distinction needs to be made.
Should we say "affordably establish, establish themselves and grow" to middle-aged? To middle-aged?
No.
Why, why don't I think on that one as well?
Think, think about that. Okay, and then on the last sentence, let's see, oh no, second to last sentence, it, the relations between the town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe are productive, efficient, and fruitful. I would, instead of fruitful, I'm suggesting mutually supportive.
Sure.
'Cause that came up in comments, people use that word mutually supportive and helping each other, so...
Sounds good.
Okay.
So those are my wordsmithing, and it, it flows nice, it's easy to read, I understand it, I think it's beautiful, I...
I like it.
You like it? How about you, John?
I thought it was a little too negative.
Hey, did you see that last sentence there? That, that's your last sentence.
I'd, I'd prefer to be a little more optimistic, but...
I, I, when I wrote this and I, and I read it, I, I, I feel it conveys a certain hope and a certain optimism.
The last thing is right here, "Chart a bright and promising future", ends in a high note.
And, you know, I just think it, it's important to...
Acknowledge.
Call it like it is.
Acknowledge things, it's important to acknowledge things.
And, and, and so, in that, in that sense, I feel like it is positive. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I disagree, but that's fine.
All right. So, it's, uh, seven fifty, um...
Six fifty.
Sorry, six fifty. So there's a package in there about goals. It's in, it's in your, it's in there, um, is it attached to the vision statement?
It is the last document in the stapled-together package that includes all the LCP stuff. Vision statements first, it's the last document in there.
And so this was the, this was the piece that was drafted by Weston and Sampson, correct? With your, I mean...
I, I gave them a bulleted list of things that came from the ninety-eight LCP and things that I thought, uh, made sense based on the workshops, and then they produced this from my, from my notes.
So, what I did is I went, I went to the old LCP and I, I looked at all the goals. And I looked at all that material that Evan is gonna get to you guys and post it, and there were goals, people suggested goals during the workshops.
Yes.
And I know that some of the things I put down in the goals are really policies and actions, you know? Um, and that's something that they'll sort out, you know?
We can work out, yeah.
We had a hard time...
Yeah.
Doing that when we first did it.
Yeah, we can work that out.
With the goal, with the, you know, we spent hours arguing about the, them.
But like, under housing, right, there's two, there's two written goals, okay? I've come up with eleven.
Wow.
Okay? And for each section, you know, economic development, you have two. I added seven to those, seven more, you know, I have like lots...
That's what we're looking for.
Uh, notes. So, should, should, should we try to, this is like a mess, I don't wanna give them to you all verbally, should we try to meet and exchange these, these ideas? I, we're not gonna have time to do it.
Yeah, that was the purpose today, and I, we started late, but, so yes, we should.
So, and you want something for the seventeenth?
I'd like, so the, my goal for the seventeenth is really to come back very close to a complete package.
On this page, on these pages?
On the goals, policies, and actions in particular, because we've already gone through the existing conditions, um, the board will still need to consume and comment on the engagement summary and the appendices, um, but it's really the goals, policies, and action sections that remain, uh, to be at least contemplated and, and a direction offered. Once we get through those, we'll be able to begin composing the document in, in, in its totality. Um, so, May seventeenth for me is, uh, I'd like to utilize that time to position myself with Weston and Sampson to, in not too long, in, in not too lengthy of an amount of time, prepare a document to, to bring back to the board in its complete form.
So... I think we need to workshop. I mean, I'm, 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 we can do a little bit on May third, but I was thinking, you know, is there a time, May eighth to the twelfth, we could workshop at the library, like, for like, three hours to go over this list? 'Cause this list is...
That's pushing it now. No, I've got five.
I mean, what, do you wanna do it early evening? At the library and workshop on this?
Could we do it during the day?
Yeah.
I'd do it anytime, I mean...
Like, the first day I can do it is like, May eighth.
I'm one of those retired...
What day of the week is that?
That's a Monday, I have a three o'clock at, in Yarmouth, um, I have, that, Wednesday the tenth, I'm free, the tenth, eleventh, or twelfth. That's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Do you wanna pencil that in and, um, everybody look at your calendar?
May ten, eleven, twelve. So the tenth is a Wednesday, so there's no, no planning board meeting that day.
Right.
I'm good for whenever the board wants to meet.
Yeah.
Maybe a late afternoon?
Whatever.
So I can go to work in the morning and then, okay.
Do you like three PM?
Yeah. Yeah, and see if we can get the con, eh, we can do the big room and people can come and watch us making sausage. Hi, Rob.
Hello.
I just took his chair.
Is Michael coming?
He should be. He sent me an email right before the meeting, so... I believe he is.
Okay. We definitely need him for, uh, seven ten, uh, no, we, we definitely need him for the seven thirty.
Has anybody called him? John, have you called Michael?
Hey, John?
I sent him a text message, I have not called him.
Did you, but did he text you back?
I'm pretty sure he was planning on coming to the meeting, 'cause he knew it was tonight.
All right, thank you. All right. Should, can you check, um...
He's coming, he won't be able to get here until a little bit after seven, but he's coming.
Okay. So what I'm wondering is if we can do a Google Doc on this?
I can't maintain Google Docs from the office, that's the only problem, Google is blocked from the town servers.
Could Weston and Sampson?
Conceivably, they could, I just, I would never be able to access it. I will...
Oh, you wouldn't be able to?
I can't access it. I can, I can from my house, but not from my office.
So let's think about it. So what I'd like to do is take this document, which is the base, it's, it's the outline of the, of the, hi, Ed, hi.
Hi.
It's the outline of the LCP, and I'd like us to all go in and be able to, you know how you can like, choose a color? You know what I mean? And put your comments in, in your color, and then we can look at them and see if we can consolidate them, what we should prioritize, that kinda stuff.
If, if you can, again, always, if you can work in track changes and send me your, your, your Word document with the changes tracked...
Then you can assign us colors?
Well, yours, if, they won't be collectively done on the same document, but at least I can pass that along to Weston and Sampson to go through your comments individually.
All right. All right, why don't you do that, why don't you get a set in Word?
All right.
And you guys know how to use track changes, right?
About me?
We can help you, Dennis, don't worry.
I still got a, a football to tell you.
I got you.
Does that sound good for everybody?
Started talking to him.
Yep, that sounds good.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm really strongly encouraging you, hi, uh, to look at, um, uh, Evan's gonna get us all that raw material from all the LCP workshops, we have the, in our packet, we have the virtual one, um, there's some survey analysis I did that I gave to Evan, I'm gonna give him that raw data to make sure that I've called those trends right. And it really helped me looking at these goals, actions, policies, and action steps, but it's, it's too much to go through verbally, it's just... So we're gonna try to meet the tenth, the eleventh, or the twelfth of May during the day.
I thought we decided May tenth?
Oh, May tenth.
Wednesday at three o'clock. Did we?
I'm sorry.
Where are we gonna be?
The library.
You gotta get permission?
I'll confirm.
All right.
Um, sh- never has been an issue in the past, but I will confirm and follow the board writing.
Yeah. It'd ne- it'd be nice to have the biggest room possible so that people can attend.
Sure.
And not the study room upstairs. All right. Anything else, any other guidance or anything like that for the LCP?
No, I think with the workshop, that'll get me where I'd like to be for May seventeenth.
'Cause, okay, and so you want this updated or commented on for Weston and Sampson?
Yes, I'd like...
Well ahead of the seventeenth.
Everyone to give that a read and say, yeah, I, this, this, I didn't hear the same thing that you heard, or this, this, I, yes, I think this should be long here, let's leave it, or if there are things that are missing, we need to know that as well.
Now, when, when's the traffic people coming?
May third.
Okay, so Beta is coming to do the, um, to present the traffic...
The transportation.
Transit, sorry, transportation work, they've, they've done.
All right.
And transportation, you're right, so that's bicycle, bicycle paths, pedestrian ways, and then the roads. And so that's good, that's on the third, so we will be working on the LCP on the third. All right. All right. Anything else on the LCP?
I'm all set, thank you guys.
All right. So our, our public hearing on the warrant article starts at seven ten, is there anything on the, um, agenda that, uh, you can...
I have a couple of updates.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we submitted a request for district local and technical assistance funding from the commission, we did receive the award, um, and, uh, it's a reimbursement, so, um, we will pay, we have fifty thousand dollars budgeted for the process, that twenty-five thousand that we received is not in addition to the fifty, it'll reimburse us for twenty-five. And today, we awarded our consultant. We've been working with Barrett Planning Group on the housing production plan update, we'll be getting, starting the scope of work pretty soon.
That's excellent, that is such great news, so we got money and we got a good consultant, they really are a good consultant.
Indeed.
Good for you guys, but good for us.
Anything else? Uh, oh, regional housing strategy. Um, I need to forward the board emails from the Cape Cod Commission, but they have scheduled, um, for community events, uh, all to be held at the library relative to the regional housing strategy, there's information available on the subject on the Cape Cod Commission's website, and I will forward to the board the email I received from the Cape Cod Commission, inviting us to participate.
Is this May-ish?
Um, I will have to take, I think it's throughout the summer, to be honest, I think it's one meeting a month for like, four months.
Okay.
But I'll confirm that as well.
It'd just be very, it'd be very interesting to have the HPP consultant on board while some of those meetings are going on, um, just because a lot of people are gonna go to those and give comment, and you could scoop that, scoop that up and use that for the HPP, and some people might think that they're commenting on the HPP while they're commenting... on the regional housing strategy.
Correct.
That's awesome. That's another good thing. All right.
Can I touch on the new business item?
Yes, please do.
So, the Scotty Development is the developer of the Sherwin-Williams over there off Route 151. They were holding $23,000, I think, in change of security for some outstanding punch list items. They have submitted a request through my office for you to reduce the amount of that bond to zero. I know they had a few outstanding things for you, Ed, so I, I'm not sure of the total, if you're 100% satisfied yet. One thing I do want to make sure that the board does in their motion, if, when you are prepared to, to reduce the value to zero, is that it's on the condition that the Scotty Development pays the out, the remaining invoice for Ed's final inspections, which I would expect to receive. So, what is the status of that, Ed? If you wouldn't mind sharing that with the board?
Yeah, so the entire Sherwin-Williams project had a few, I want to say a dozen punch list items, some of which they couldn't deal with till springtime, seeding, loaming and seeding.
Oh, okay.
They just loaned and seeded the areas that I asked them to seed. In fact, there's already been some, a little bit of washout from it, but I fairly believe that once the grass grows, everything will be fine. So- Do you need to plug that in? Yep. So, the remaining item is really establishment of the, of the detention basin, grassy areas that are, that didn't take, that got eroded. Basically, they built the detention basin, didn't loam and seed it in time last fall, so it eroded over the winter. And they had to remove the sediment from the bottom, add some more stone, clean it all up, and then loam and seed it, which they did. So, I would certainly support, if the board is so inclined, approving releasing their funds, subject to my final inspection in a couple of weeks when we have grass. So, the vote you could take, you could condition it that, you know, we agree with that, and that can be released and processed once Peshaw Engineering has given staff the final report. And of course, then I would provide my final invoice, and it's not for very much, for a few hours, going back and forth with them and wrapping it up, a couple inspections, that's it. And I submit my final invoice, and then, what's good is the Scotty Development people understand they can't take that out, we can't pay for that out of the money that they have in surety, they have to send a separate check. So, they're, they've been trained, so to speak, or explained that, so they understand that that's the way it's got to go. So, I would be certainly happy, they've done everything else I asked them to do, they took care of everything, and it looks great. And, again, I would be in favor of you approving a release of all their money, subject to my final inspection, and of course-
An approval. Final inspection and approval.
Approval, and, and of course, the final invoice. So, at least he doesn't have to come back for a vote at another meeting, because that might happen in a couple of weeks.
So, Evan, can you condition a release?
What I would look for is, is your support in a vote to hold the check until I, I have the adequate funds in my account to make sure that I can pay Ed upon the final inspections being made to his satisfaction.
Do you want to so move that?
Don't move it.
Second.
Okay. Any, any other questions or discussion from board members? So, we're going to have to do a roll call vote. We do a roll call vote, because we have a member participating remotely. Karen Faulkner?
Aye.
John Filon?
Aye.
Dennis Belzini?
Aye.
Mary Wagon, aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, we got through that.
Now is the time for the public hearing?
Yep, I just want to cross that off. Okay. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the public hearing to review zoning articles proposed for action at the May 2nd.
May 1st.
Thank you. For the May 1st, 2023 Town Meeting, public hearing, public hearing notice pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, at 7:10, from Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, in the Wacoit Meeting Room to review the following zoning articles proposed for action at the May 1st, 2023 Town Meeting. Warrant Article Number 30, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 174-25H12 of the Mashpee Zoning Board, I'm sorry, Mashpee Zoning Bylaw, Table of Use Regulations, to allow for medium and large-scale solar energy systems in the C1 and C2 zoning districts. This article would expand the number of zoning districts where medium and large-scale solar energy systems could be permitted. Medium and large-scale solar energy systems would be allowed as a necessary and/or principal use in the C1 and C2 zoning districts with a special permit from the Planning Board by amending the table of uses accordingly. This article was submitted by the Planning Board. Warrant Article 31, to see if the town would vote to amend Section 174-31 Land Space Requirement Table to allow for a reduced minimum lot frontage requirement for medium and large-scale solar energy systems in the C1 and C2 zoning districts. I'm going to pause for a second. Could you get the presentation up? This article would allow for the development of solar energy systems on lots that have a minimum of 25 feet by amending the footnotes in the Land Space Requirement Table and the zoning bylaw. Lot frontage of 150 feet is the minimum requirement for other uses in the town. This article was submitted by the Planning Board. Warrant Article 32, to see if the town would vote to add new Section 174-45.7 Solar Energy Systems to the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw. This article provides the application requirements and performance standards for any proposed medium or large-scale solar energy system. It facilitates and encourages energy, solar energy system uses for medium scale, parentheses up to 40,000 square feet, and large scale, parentheses greater than 40,000 square feet, into the C1 and C2 commercial zoning districts. Any medium and large-scale solar energy system proposed in either of those zoning districts would require an application to the Planning Board for a special permit outlining compliance with the minimum required performance standards of this article. This article was submitted by, by the Planning Board. Warrant Article 43, to see if the town would vote to amend Section 174-25H12 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw, Table of Use Regulations, to allow for medium and large-scale solar energy systems in the C1 and C2 zoning districts. This article would allow the development of medium and large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems in the C1 and C2 zoning districts with a special permit from the Planning Board and, and in the industrial zoning district by approval of site plan review per the standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations as set by Section 174-45.7 Solar Energy Systems of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw. This article was submitted by petition. Warrant Article 44, to see if the town would vote to add new Section 174-45, I'm sorry, 174-45.7 Solar Energy Systems to the Mashpee Zoning Bylaws. This section promotes the creation of small, medium, and large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems by providing standards for placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and for providing adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations. This article was submitted by petition. Warrant Article 45, to see if the town would vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting in its entirety Section 174-17.1 Raise and Replace. This article would remove the ability of the Zoning Board of Appeals to issue special permits to approve the demolition and replacement of pre-existing non-conforming dwellings by deleting the application, sorry, by deleting the applicable section of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw in its entirety. This article would not impact the ability of property owners to continue, extend, or alter pre-existing nonconformities as currently allowed by Mashpee Zoning Bylaw in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, 40A, Section 6. This article was submitted by petition. The full text of these articles may be reviewed in the Office of the Town Manager/Select Board and the Planning Department. This public hearing notice was submitted by Mary Wagon, Chair of the Mashpee Planning Board, and the publication dates were Friday, March 24th, 2023, and Friday, March 31st, 2023. Okay, so, what I'd like to do, let's see, I have a presentation for Article 30, 31 and 32, right? Those three?
Yep.
Okay. So, if you don't mind, I think I'm going to just do the presentation and then take public comment on 30, 31, and 32. Is that okay? Now, John, can you, can you see the slides?
I was not able to see the other slide.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm sorry, we do, we, it shows that we're sharing the screen, so-
It's fine.
I'll just go slow, okay. So, the town of Mashpee, the Planning Board has proposed a new solar bylaw to protect public health, safety, and welfare of Mashpee. Okay. As many of you know, ooh, how do you go to the next one? What is this, a PDF? It's a PDF, okay. Okay, as many as you, as many of you know, Massachusetts is encouraging the production of solar energy to generate clean and cheap electricity.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
It's not cheap. Solar energy systems are protected by state statute, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, which states, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." Okay? So, basically, what this says is that the law protects solar energy systems in towns and municipalities. And as a result, if a town does not adequately zone for solar energy systems with a clever court case, right? A solar energy system can go anywhere in your town. Okay? So, and that, that leaves us without protecting public health, safety, or welfare, the town. So, there was a recent court case. So, why do we need a stronger solar bylaw in town? There was a recent court case. It was the Tracy, Tracer Lane 2 Realty LLC versus the City of Waltham, that put the state statute to the test. There, this lawsuit was upheld, and in 2022, this case was judged in favor of Tracer, Tracer Lane Realty. The court overruled Waltham's decision denying an access road to a solar energy facility, which was cutting through a residential district. And it was, what was, it was basically, went that way because Waltham zoned too little of its land for solar energy systems. So, this court case, you know, our town planner had been following this court case for a while, and it prompted the board to reexamine our local zoning to see if we ourselves would find ourselves in the same situation. So, yes, the court case reiterated Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, is enforceable, but the court case also noted that the preservation of residential character of neighborhoods is a legitimate municipal purpose to be achieved by local zoning. So, the big question was, does Mashpee have enough land zoned for solar energy? How, how could we avoid being a target for similar lawsuits? And how could we preserve the residential character of neighborhoods with our zoning? So, what we have today is shown in the upper section. Our existing bylaw allows small systems, which are 1,750 square feet or less, and ground-mounted, in our residential R3 and R5 zone, commercial C1 and C2, commercial C3, and industrial I. Okay? Larger systems, which are anything over 1,750 square feet, in this case, only allowed in the industrial area. And also, the industrial, what we have now in our zoning doesn't have significant performance standards for these systems. It just says that neighboring properties have to be protected from glare, that the systems are properly fenced and otherwise secure, and that they don't have hazardous materials on site stored in quantities greater than permitted by other sections. So, what our proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw would do is it, it would allow the small systems in residential, commercial, and industrial, but also allow medium systems, which are 1,750 square feet to 40,000 square feet, and large systems, which are over 40,000 square feet, in the commercial C1 and C2, and in the industrial I1. It also has performance standards for these medium and large systems, even in the industrial zone, that limit height to 15 feet. They have defined setbacks, landscaping plan, visual impact mitigation, vegetation controls, erosion, stormwater management, fencing, light restrictions. It requires the sites to be maintained. It prohibits panels made with PFAS and requires decommissioning plans with abandonment certainties. So, that's what's being proposed, and these are some of the performance standards. Visual impact mitigation, screen the system year-round from all roadways adjacent properties that are in residential use. There's a slew of setbacks ranging from, I think, 25 feet to 125 feet, oh, excuse me, and, I'm sorry, to 200 feet. And that's important, because it matches what our setbacks are from wetlands, water, rivers, and also, these, these pieces of these solar systems that are perceived to be hazardous to residential areas, and, you know, because people feel they explode, right, and catch on fire. Those pieces of the system have to be 200 feet away from residential. It also requires a landscape plan required to replicate naturally wooded areas. So, the intent for this is to keep everybody safe, and to keep it far enough away and visually screened, so hopefully, you won't see it. Right, Karen?
Yep.
You learn a lot of things when you are sitting on a planning board. You have a lighting plan, so there can't be any stray light at night on neighboring properties. This is the thing that I thought that was amazing, vegetation management, right? You have to keep the vegetation of these systems down, they get hot, and if you let them get overgrown, they can catch fire. So, the other thing is, we require mechanical removal, not chemical removal, because we live on a sandbar, and our groundwater, i.e. our drinking water, is right below all of these systems, so we put that in there. Fencing with a slot on the bottom of a six-inch clearance, and when the land is cleared, there's required to be erosion control. If you've seen one of these systems go in, like Catuit Road in Sandwich, they clear cut, they get rid of all the trees, they get rid of all the stumps.
That's horrible.
It's horrible, but that's, that, that area on Catuit Road in Sandwich is zoned residential. So, that, if you pass this, that won't happen here. Yep. Storm, a storm management, stormwater management plan is required, a maintenance plan is required. These systems are there. These systems are there for over a decade, if not two decades, and they're supposed to be maintained in good shape. They can't be, like, falling apart, and they can't have chipping paint. They, if something gets damaged, it has to be fixed. Also, we're banning any solar panels that have PFAS in them. A lot of times, these systems were just abandoned and the PFAS contaminated groundwater. And then it also has a decommissioning plan. This is extremely important. These systems are not going to last forever. They, these companies that want to do this in town, they have to put up a surety that's approved by the town, so that if something gets abandoned, somebody goes out of business, we have the money to clean up the site.
How's that work if I, you say we have $1,000 to get rid of these? 20 years later, when we get rid of it, the price left at $10,000?
That's why we have an uptick, isn't it?
Yep.
X plus 50%.
Now, the Town Manager brought that up, and he asked that we, in the case of any surety, and we might have to put that in our rules and regulations for special permits, we might have to update our special permit rules and regs. He wants the treasurer's input on those sureties. Some sureties are easier to collect than others, and we might want to say, well, you know, if we're gonna, if you...
The treasurer told me we should require cash.
Cash.
Cash, security.
But we might want, normally, we get a quote on what it would be to decommission, and we multiply it by 50%, so your surety is 150% of that, right? But because we might not use this for two decades, maybe three, right? We should probably figure out how to capture it so we capture inflation.
Well, I'm thinking it's gonna be hard to get rid of this stuff because of pollution.
Yeah.
And 20 years from now, a lot of places that were taking it today say, "We're not gonna take this," so we gotta look at that to make sure there's a disposal.
We'll have to see if we can charge more than a 50% markup. It might have to be 100% markup, I don't know.
It's at your discretion, ultimately.
So we, but we do have, we have to put it in the rules and regs so we don't forget.
It could be like 150% plus a COLA.
Yeah.
Right, but you have, right, yes, I get, yeah.
You know, just add that, and we don't know what that would be. COLA over all those years.
That's a good idea.
Any other board members before I open it up to public comment? Any other board members? Yep? Go ahead, Dennis.
I have industrial, and I build a big, a big...
Oh, use your mic.
I, my industrial back, I build a big building. Can I put my soul on top of the building?
Yes.
And that don't, that's like, anybody can do that, right? Put him on top of the roof?
Correct. Yes.
And how is that allowed? Explain that, how, that's allowed today?
Yeah, roof-mounted panels are always, are allowed, pertinence to any approved structure.
And how about carports with solar panels on top?
So we, the way we've kind of looked at this, and we had this discussion a number of years ago about spelling out whether we wanted to include a use in the use table specifically for the solar carports. At that time, the decision was no, but myself and the building commissioner essentially look at it as, if you can have a structure, like a carport, then the panels that go on that carport are roof-mounted panels, and thus isn't allowed. So you couldn't have a carport that was in excess of what you would otherwise be allowed to have as a carport or a garage or some accessory structure to your dwelling.
Okay.
Well...
We're treating them as roof-mounted panels.
One more thing. I don't know if anybody heard in the news, they did the test of Buzzer's Bay, the quality of it.
Chesapeake Bay?
Really doing really good. Was doing real good. The only problem they were worried about is climate change and solar plants. They cut all the trees down, and they're getting the runoff because there's no trees there no more going into Buzzer's Bay, and they said, "We're scared in five years this is gonna be a problem." So we gotta make sure where these go, the cutting all the trees down is not going into, like, a river because there's no more...
So we have, we have a stormwater, we have to have a stormwater management plan.
All right.
All right. And an erosion control plan.
Right, but trees take up a lot of...
I know. That's one feedback I've gotten, and that's why it was on the cover of the Cape Cod Times. You know, it's, it's, to protect ourselves, we have to allow it. Otherwise, it can go anywhere. It's just...
I, I do think, I want to restate one more time on the record that expanding, expanding solar uses in the C1 or C2 or any other zoning district isn't the only option, I think, to protect residential character in consideration of the Tracer Lane v. Waltham case, because it's, the judge in his judgment essentially said, you know, or at least in 48, Section 3, it's the line, "Except where necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare." So I think that is an option that could have been explored.
It's going to be explored.
But without allowing it in C1 and C2 districts is my only point. I think we could have explored that as an option.
But we're talking about this. We didn't have time to do that, so I don't want to, I'm sorry, but I don't want to confuse people. This is what we have.
Yeah.
We can always fine-tune things, but this is the first opportunity since that court case we've been able to jump forward, and this is protective zoning.
We could fine-tune this if we find out, hey, we gotta come back on this.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Like, I don't want to confuse people, you know? This is the option we had now. We asked if we were ready, if staff was ready to propose something different, and we weren't. This is what we're doing now.
Okay.
I need you on board, Devin. And we're gonna carve out time, we have, oh, hold on, John, hold on, John. And we have time to do, we have to, we have to start working on that because it's July. We have a July deadline for that. And that's not, it's already April. So maybe we can talk about what the schedule is for that, because we have to have that done by the first Monday in July or something like that. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's an easy article to write, what I'm suggesting.
You, you write it, we'll look at it.
What's John got to say?
Oh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to note it somewhere in this presentation or somewhere in this paperwork that this was not a unanimous vote by the Planning Board. There were two Planning Board members that voted against these articles, and I support Evan's position. He's the professional planner. These articles aren't ready.
So, John, we're gonna, we're gonna take another vote tonight, okay?
Good.
All right. Is there anybody?
I didn't hear what he said.
He wanted, he wanted to remind the public?
It was a three to two.
That when this article was proposed and sent to the Board of Selectmen, it was a split vote, three to two, from the Planning Board. And I would like to remind the public that, you know, the Planning Board was not offered any alternative to this.
Actually, they were.
No, they weren't. Not in writing. I didn't, okay, why don't you email that to me in writing, John, what was offered to us? Because otherwise, otherwise, that is confusing.
The planning board has been trying to explain this to the Planning Board for months.
Right. Okay. Let's air our dirty laundry. You can look at the video. When the planner was asked for an alternative, he said he didn't have time to bring that forward.
I presented three options.
Wait until it's ready.
Right. And we said, "Bring it to us." An overlay district, and you said you didn't have ti, I'll find it and send it to you.
Right.
That's right. That's exactly right.
That's correct. So we are doing the best we can with the time that we have. And I really, I, I, you want to, you want to air our dirty laundry in front of town meeting? Let's do it. I, I think it's a, I think it's a poor strategy.
I think it's just important for people to know that the article that's presented, which is legal and sound and covers the bases, is not the only option.
It never is. But that's the option that, considering what was in front of the Planning Board, the Planning Board voted to go forward with.
Yes.
And it would be nice if we had a little unity on it, because it's gonna confuse people, and then we're gonna be a serious target for a crafty and aggressive lawsuit. Okay?
No, I disagree.
I completely disagree with that, John. I think that we've been target, we've been a target of aggressive lawsuits, and we will again, unless we do this.
But let the planner, the Town Planner do his job.
Mr. Filon, the Planning Board Chairwoman is doing her job. Okay?
Let the Town Planner do his job.
Yeah, I'm doing my job. Thank you. Little preview for town meeting. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk about this or offer the Planning Board any comment? Okay. Seeing none. Okay, so I don't think, I'm not sure that I can close the public hearing on those three items. I think I have to move forward on the other articles. Okay. So, warrant Article 43 and 44, they're both submitted by petition. I believe the petitioner is here. I would like to recognize the petitioner. Do you know if the next petitioner is online?
No, you'd have to check the Zoom, but he confirmed to me he would be participating on Zoom today.
Can you check for me?
Glenn, are you on the phone?
I don't see him, Evan.
He's on here, he's gonna be freaking out, he knows to call the number.
Can he hear us? Evan?
He has to call the conference bridge to...
But can he hear us?
If he calls into the conference bridge, he can hear you.
Okay.
Or he could call, he could dial into the closed-circuit TV channel, he could hear you.
So how do we get a message to him to call in?
I exchanged emails with him today and gave him the number. He should know, so...
So do we have, okay, so do we have a video? Can he, can he see me if I, if we turn the video on?
Yeah.
Can you do that? And what's the call-in number? 539 what?
1449.
Okay. All right. Oh, there he is. All right.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, backwards.
Well, he is on the other side of the earth, so maybe it'll...
Oh, there he is.
Okay, he's there.
There's a, there's a face.
Glenn, can you hear us?
Is there a call in?
Glenn, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Uh, I can, but we're gonna go, we're gonna go to Lynn and then to you, okay? Okay. I would like to recognize Lynn Barbie, who's the petitioner for Article 43 and 44.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. So I have submitted two articles that were based on the drafts that the Planning Board itself was discussing. It's not identical to the Planning Board's petition, but it's very, 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 very similar. And I'll just explain why I was submitting these petitions. Some of you may recall that once upon a time, at a couple of town meetings, I had proposed some requirements for, at that point, a proposed overlay, which would have meant open space and setbacks. And those, that overlay article was withdrawn, so I never did get a chance to put in my thoughts about having open space and setbacks and protection for the water. So when this came up, I said, "This is a time when I want people to know," as I've said many times, "I really support solar. I think solar is wonderful if it's done properly." And I was, I have seen that giant solar array on Katuut in residential land, and it, it just really seriously disturbed me. So that's why I have said that the articles that I'm submitting basically mirror the requirements that your article, that the Planning Board's article had in terms of performance standards. And doesn't, it, it's, as I said, it's not identical, but I'm hoping that at the town meeting, your article will be approved, and then there won't need to be more discussion on that. But I'm here to answer questions if you want to ask me any questions. Because I'm, I also will just say, I did check into the lawsuit. I actually called the town of Waltham and asked them about it because I really don't want to see solar in residential areas, and I do want to see, make sure that we're not in a situation as a town where we could get caught up with not having the appropriate bylaws. Thanks.
Well, what did they say?
Well, the person I spoke to in the legal department of Waltham said that they, that they believed that what their lawsuit was not, wouldn't necessarily be applied to every single town in every single situation, that it was very particular to their situation. But they did say that they had learned from that experience that they needed to be, to be, provide more options for solar, and that they were, you know, they were gonna follow through with that. So they, they said, "Oh, well, you know," what I told them, I was from Mashpee, and they said, "Well, you know, it's, this is not like, it'd be, you'd have the same result in Mashpee, but you don't want to be in a situation where you're having to have that kind of fight with a developer simply because you don't have good bylaws in writing," which I think your bylaw is, and mine is almost as good as yours, but not quite.
So your bylaw, your bylaw has those performance standards that we're completely missing right now from mine.
Yes, yes. Yes, the one thing I think that's, that's not in mine is I don't have the restriction about PFAS, but I totally support that. It just didn't occur to me when I was writing it, and you all, you all had, I had not seen your final one, but I do, I think the performance standards are really, really important, to have setbacks from water, to have all of the things that you all have proposed in your bylaw of making sure that, that what we, what we do allow and what we do encourage really works best for the town and for the residents, that, you know, nobody's gonna build a big solar thing in my backyard, for example, whatever, which I know they can't. But I think the performance standards are essential to having, to, to, what I think happened in the previous, that whole overlay process that happened a couple of years ago was that we didn't have clarity about what would work best for the town. And there's, so there weren't those same performance standards, and that was very disturbing to a lot of people. And I, my attempt at that time was to try to introduce some performance standards, which I think was weak compared to what we have in the performance standards currently that you all have proposed and that I'm proposing, because we want to make sure that, that communities are not negatively impacted by solar, and we want to make sure that our environment is not negatively impacted by solar.
Mary, Point of Water, we were supposed to go Southworth, we're supposed to go at 7:30, so we have to continue the, continue this for 8 o'clock.
So, um...
We're gonna open the meeting, then we continue.
Okay. So we're gonna take a pause? We keep this, we keep this open, so just stay right where you are. right where you are. Okay. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the special, I mean, sorry, yep, yep, the public hearing, the 7:30 public hearing. The applicant is Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. The location is 275 Quinacquissette Avenue, MAP 69 Block 32. The request, the applicant proposes to modify the Willow Bend Country Club's special permit to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacquissette into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units, 287 dwelling units in the maximum, is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by an existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. So I'm opening up the meeting, and then we're gonna immediately continue it. Mashpee Planning Board Public Meeting Notice pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 11, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 1, 2023, at 7:10 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify Willow Bend Country Club's special permit. The application proposes to construct a 14-unit, single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinacquissette Avenue, MAP, S.S.R. MAP 69, Block 32. The existing special permit dwelling is proposed, the existing single-family dwelling is proposed. I'm gonna strike that, because that doesn't apply. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275, oh, I see. The existing single-family dwelling unit located at 275 Quinacquissette is proposed for demolition, excuse me. With these changes, the total count for the Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinacquissette into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project. Submitted by Mary E. Wagan, Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, February 10, 2023, and Friday, February 17, 2023. I take a motion to continue this until 8:05.
Obey.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to have to seat Rob Hanson on this. You've missed one session. Okay. Before we make any decision, you'll have to review that session and/or the minutes and sign a piece of paper saying that you've done so.
Don't you think Mike would want to vote on this petition, though?
Excuse, Michael's not here. Michael can miss one meeting. John is gone. I have one, two, three, four.
John left?
John's not here. We'll discuss that when we get to it, but at this point, I'm seating Rob Hanson to continue it, okay? And we're gonna continue it to 8:10, 8:05?
8:05.
8:05.
Oh, 8:05.
We might need a break. Okay. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. So Chrissy, just carefully note that the chair seated Rob Hanson on the matter. Thank you. And can you note the time and who's in attendance to Chrissy? Thank you. Okay. Lynn?
Yes.
Any questions for Lynn from Planning Board members? Yes, Rob?
Lynn, you said the existing Articles 31, 2, 3, whatever, that we're discussing, include all of your elements?
Yes.
So.
Mine does not, is missing a couple of elements that are in that, but the.
Right. So it's superfluous to what the Planning Board has proposed.
It, yes, yes. The reason, and probably other people know this, the reason that I did a petition article was just to make sure that it got on the warrant. But, but the, once there is a vote at the town meeting for your article, my article would be, it's superfluous. It could be tabled. Could be, yeah. Yeah. Unless we really want to have a nice, long town meeting, and then we could read it every document. I'm kidding.
Will that be explained?
Yes.
Part of your explanation of.
That, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, the same. It's follow-up Articles 43 and 44 that are included.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anybody from the public? Yes. And maybe you can take one of those mics up to the podium. Maybe that would be, uh, let's see if it works.
I'll be brief. Michaela Columbo, 35 Meadowbrook Road. I just want to say that with regard to Articles 30, 31, 32, and 43, both, I know both the Select Board and FinCom voted positively to support those articles. Thank you.
Thank you.
They actually each voted unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. So many people know Michaela Wyman Columbo is a member of the Select Board. She's also the Select Board's liaison to the Planning Board, and I really appreciate you coming to our meetings. You're a very busy person, but I would have forgotten to mention that, so I really appreciate you being here. Okay, so if there's no other, any other comments from the public on Articles 43 and 44?
Yeah, I have some.
Oh, hi.
No.
Please grab a mic.
As long as you ask. Thank you. My name's John Miller. I'm the town moderator.
Are you speaking for yourself or as the town moderator?
Both.
Okay, good.
Probably more the latter.
Okay.
There are a number of more or less duplicate articles in this year's warrant, as I think everybody knows, that is a recipe for colossal confusion among the voters at town meeting. So I think whoever is the proponent of the first redundant article would be helpful to everybody in attendance to speculate on what the consequence of a yes or no vote on that article would be.
Okay.
Relative to the article that follows. So theoretically, based on the discussion I heard tonight, in the case of these articles, if the Planning Board articles that were submitted passed, then the petitioner's articles would be indefinitely postponed. But they don't have to be, and there's no guarantee of that. That would seem to be the prudent thing to do. And if there are nuanced differences between those two articles, we could have a scenario where we'd have essentially two articles debated on the floor and passed, or rejected, or some combination of the two, which then could set up all sorts of legal conflicts if we had essentially the same article that was passed on the first vote and rejected on the second vote, not to mention the possibility of reconsideration of the, of the, of the previous vote. So handle it as you, I'll, I'll try to be tolerant of the need to everybody to have their say, but I think the voters might find it helpful in this case if the Planning Board could go on the record saying whether or not they support the petitioner's article, or might even encourage the appropriateness of indefinitely postponing it, depending on the outcome of the Planning Board article.
We might have to have a flow chart.
We try to.
Right? Because we might have to, what if, what if it fails the first time, but the citizen's petition passes? So we might have to have flow chart. Hey, I have a question for you. What is reconsideration?
If somebody proclaims a notice of an intent to reconsider a previously acted-upon article, and it's usually by the proponent of that article, then whenever, whatever article is under discussion, the moderator has the discretion to take a vote on whether reconsideration is desired, as the next order of business after the current article that's being discussed is disposed of. So.
So, all right, so there's a vote. There's a vote. So it's within, is it within, within a time period?
Within 30 minutes.
Within 30 minutes of that vote?
Now, there could have been.
And it's not you that calls for reconsideration. It's somebody who calls to you for it?
No, some, somebody will say, Mr. Moderator, I would like to provide notice of reconsideration on Article whatever.
Any town member meeting, I could call a reconsideration.
And then, having made that, we will continue with the discussion of whatever's on the floor at the moment. But after that item is disposed of, then I would call for a vote up or down on whether the voters wish to reconsider the article that was requested.
And is that by majority? You will reconsider?
Simple majority at that point?
It's by the same vote as what would be required of the reconsidered article.
Okay, so.
So it could be two-thirds, it could be majority.
So zoning, it would be two-thirds?
Solar would be two-thirds.
Right.
And what happens, the vote may not pass, or pass, and people leave.
Right. Then they show, it comes around after people have left.
A couple of times I did that.
And so you don't leave if you, if you wanted to pass.
Years ago.
Years ago. The last time we tried it, it went down in flames.
Right.
Now, in this case, you know, if reconsideration is not requested, there's probably no need to do that, because they'll get another bite of the apple when the petition article comes around. And then there could be a debate on whether there are nuanced differences between the two. So I, I think the smart strategy, if somebody objects to the Planning Board's article, would not be to rally to reconsider that one, but consider it again when the petition article comes up.
May I ask another question?
You're the chair.
The person, the person who calls and gives you notice for reconsideration, did they have to vote in the affirmative or negative, or the winning side, or the losing side?
Yeah. Typically, it's somebody that voted in the affirmative on the original article, but you can't really substantiate that, since we use, you know, a hand count or just a voice vote.
So as moderator, you're gonna, you're gonna.
That would be an argument as a sidebar for electronic voting down the road.
Okay. So as moderator, you plan to not consider that, whether, what the original vote of the petitioner for reconsideration made?
I didn't say that.
Do, okay, so I'm asking you, how are you going to handle that?
Well, we'll see what happens on May 1st.
Would you be able to tell us before town meeting starts?
As a practical matter, I don't know how you could authenticate whether the person seeking reconsideration voted in favor or against the original motion.
I think in the past, the people sitting next to them authenticated it.
Well.
Yeah, but that, you can't tell.
Perhaps. But this is in the discretion of the town moderator, you know?
Right.
If it seems to be prudent and in the best interest of voters making informed decisions, arguably, it probably doesn't matter whether that person made the, voted in favor or not.
I agree.
The larger issue is whether it warrants a second, a second look.
We've had reconsiderations, that we've had this conversation on town meeting floor. That is, okay, all right.
So I can just respond.
John, I think you should do a public service announcement like you did previously.
Be confusing, I think.
So John, you're still here?
I've been here.
You're off the Zoom.
I'm off the Zoom. I'm on my phone, and I'm live streaming on my iPad because I couldn't see the screen.
Okay.
Nothing was popping up.
So you've been here the whole time?
Correct.
Okay, so Chrissy, can you, can you modify the minutes to recognize that John Filon has been here the entire time? We opened a public hearing, and we didn't think you were here, John, because I couldn't see you.
Because we didn't see his phone on the Zoom, which we used to see.
I've been here. I switched to the live stream from Mashpee TV because I couldn't see the screen share.
I'm so glad you said something. All right, good. John, oh, go ahead.
So if I were just comment, I did, was contacted by moderator, and he asked me about this, and I said I had no intention of creating confusion and chaos, and that if it, if it came down to it, you know, I would certainly consider postponing it, you know, indefinitely postponing it, once the first vote had happened for the, I mean, on the Planning Board's article, because we don't need more confusion. No, and I appreciated that he had reached out to me about that, and we had a conversation about that. I said, yes, I would definitely be considering indefinitely postponing if that was the appropriate thing to do.
And I've started a practice of trying to reach out to all petitioners on petition articles, just to get a sense of where they're coming from and have, have a dialogue if it's appropriate. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Did, did John Filon have something for me, or was he just registering his presence? I couldn't understand him.
I couldn't hear, really.
So John, do you have, do you have any comments?
I was, I was suggesting, John, that you do a public, this is very important information, and maybe you should do a public service announcement like you did previously before town meeting, explaining what you just said.
So Mr. Filon is suggesting that the town moderator take, craft those comments and issues that he's talking about into a PSA to get it out there for town meeting voters?
The, the point's well taken, and I'm sort of debating with myself how to appropriately address that, because it would be my desire to maintain objectivity. So by talking the way we have sort of informally here tonight on the town meeting floor.
It's not informal here. It's formal.
To me, it's informal.
Well, it's not. It's formal, John.
The voters are not here tonight to act on the decisions that are being discussed. So on the town meeting floor, I would have to choose my words carefully, and I'll consider doing that if I'm going to speculate on what the scenarios might be.
Like, if I can just say, for, for myself and I think maybe for some others, we learned last, at the last town meeting, that at the last minute, a petitioned, an article that had come from the town committee or commission or whatever, or a staff person, could be withdrawn by a vote of the Select Board. However, a petitioned article, like me petitioning, could not. And so part of it was just to have some sense of security that these issues would definitely get in front of the, the people to let them vote.
Right. It's an insurance policy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Consider me etna.
Is, is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on Article 43, 44? Okay. We're gonna move on to Article 45.
It's almost 8:05.
Yes, I know, but it's not quite 8:05, so I can't continue the 8:05 public hearing until we hit 8:05. How about we take a break?
Good idea.
You want to take a break?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two minutes. Glenn, I'm so sorry, we're gonna have to, okay.
And Mike Richards. And Mike Richards. We can't have a long time because who's supposed to? Yeah, yeah. Who's supposed to? Yeah. 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 Glenn, can you hear me?
Okay.
Glenn, how long is your presentation? Do you think you need 10 minutes?
Uh, maybe not, for sure.
Okay.
I'll go quick.
Yeah. Well, so we'll, so Glenn is saying he needs 10 minutes for his presentation. Let's postpone the Willow Bend public hearing.
Twenty pass.
Twenty pass.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd take a motion to post, continue the Willow Bend South Worth public hearing to 8:20.
Second.
Okay. So I've seated Rob. Because we have a remote participant, we need to do roll call vote. Any discussion about that? Okay. Rob Hanson?
Hi.
Dennis Balzerini? John Filon?
Yes.
John Filon said yes. Karen Faulkner?
Hi.
Mary Wagan? Yes. Okay. So the chair recognizes the petitioner for Article 45, Glenn McCarthy. Now.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Okay?
Yeah.
Just speak really loud, slow and clear, because the acoustics here are terrible. So really loud, slow and clear. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mrs. Chairperson and Planning Board. I've submitted written comments. I sent them to Evan. I hope everybody has those. I'm going to try to just highlight through them.
I'm just deaf, I guess.
Do you guys have those?
Yes, Glenn, your comments are included in the board's packet.
Yeah.
Do you want me to just read your comments?
Yes.
Because people cannot hear you.
Uh, yeah. Um, I can tell a few things and then, I don't know what to point if no one can hear it.
So, so I'm going to ask John Miller, who's the furthest back, can you hear Glenn?
I can hear him, but I can't understand him.
Right. So people can hear you but can't understand you.
Sounds like he's talking.
Yeah.
Probably no vault, a bit. Speaker can't hear.
So, I mean, people can move up? You guys want to move up? If you want to hear what Glenn has to say, please come towards the phone.
Mary, I think it would be advisable for you or someone to read it because honestly, even if you're close, I'm sitting right here.
Okay.
It's very hard to understand.
I'm going to read your comments, Glenn.
Okay. Here, free to paraphrase them a little bit. You know, the key points, of course, are that prior to 2018, this was done, my house was replaced in 1994, is legal issues and the other points I made and then maybe actually that, Mary, I could fill in any of the blanks or questions that people have.
Okay. All right. So this is a memo from Glenn McCarthy, the lead petitioner for Article number 45. "To the Planning Board, Chair, Planning Board Members, Town Planner, and Residents of Mashpee, Regarding Public Comment on Article Number 45 from Glenn McCarthy, Lead Petitioner. I would like to clarify a few misconceptions and call your attention to the issues with Article 5, Section 174-17.1, Raise and Replace, and explain why I filed the citizen's petition regarding this deletion. One, raising and replacing was allowed before Section 174.17.1 was, before 174.17.1 and is absolutely allowed if it's deleted. In no way does Article 45 prohibit raising and replacing. Rebuilding is necessary and beneficial when done responsibly. It is important to understand that removing 17.1 does not prohibit raising and replacing. Many people raised and replaced their homes before Article 17.1 was put in place in 2018. Eliminating Section 17.1 would not prohibit continuances, extensions, and alterations. They would be regulated per Section 174-17, as they were for decades prior to 2018. Two, legal problems with Section 17.1. Section 17.1 has legal flaws due to its hasty drafting and its narrow and intense focus on enabling a specific waterfront luxury project. The bylaw was adept, was adopted, admitted the words, oh, sorry, the bylaw that was adopted omitted the words, quote, "to the neighborhood," end quote, as part of the "not be substantially more detrimental" clause. This was done intentionally, a fact documented in the 228 Waiting Place Road Land Court Case decision. The appendix of this letter has the full quotes, but they are parts, but the key parts are noted below. Quote, "Not only does the board's interpretation not make sense, but is contrary to general law, Section 40A, Section 6, and other provisions of the Mashpee bylaw, including Section 174.17, which would require such a finding." Quote, "Section 6 does not otherwise permit the extension or alteration of a nonconforming structure or use, nor does it authorize a municipality to enact a bylaw that is inconsistent with its limitations." Indeed, Section 174.17 of the Mashpee bylaw tracks Section 6 and requires the identical finding for the extension or alteration of a nonconforming structure or use." End quote. Quote, "Furthermore, a literal reading of Section 174.17.1 conflicts with Section 174-17, which applies to nonconformities in general." End quote. This means that Section 17.1 is defective. The sooner it is repealed, the sooner the town can reduce the risk of being sued and stop a potential liability from growing. As I understand, the town is now in its third or fourth litigation matter related to this flaw. Three, subjective zoning bylaws are bad for everyone. Homeowners, homebuyers, investors, all need certainty over what is often the largest financial asset or financial decision they make. Section 17.1 has given us what I call Forrest Gump zoning. Quote, "It's like a box of chocolates, you never know what you're going to get." End quote. This is bad for buyers, sellers, the neighbors in the town. In early 2023, one ZBA member said in public meeting that under Section 17.1, if one interprets lot coverage as an existing nonconformity, then you can raise and replace and you can cover the entire lot with structure right up to the setbacks, meaning you can now build a 30,000 to 40,000 square foot house on a half acre. He then added, quote, "Of course, only if we decide to allow it." End quote. Four, in a state of mass, in a state of mass zoning bylaw, bylaws are required to move toward conformance, not away from it. Section 17.1 rewards noncompliance and incentivize making those things worse. The crux of 17.1 is that existing nonconformities are allowed to be extended by special permit. The bylaw says that this is, this was sold hard to the public and it does not allow new conformities. However.
Nonconformities.
It does not allow new nonconform, I'm going to start that sentence again. The crux of 17.1 is that existing nonconformities are allowed to be extended by special permit. The bylaw says, and this was sold hard to the public, that it does not allow new nonconformities. However, on the ground, in the real world, many of the extensions are in reality new nonconformities. And he gives three examples, which I'm going to skip because he is a four-page document here. The extension of nonconform.
You can skip that, that's the last page. At the end of it is just land court, cut and paste. So just a couple paragraphs.
Okay.
But they're really important examples, Mary.
Okay, then I will, I will do the examples. Point number one, your neighbor has a house that is 10 feet from the side lot and his house is one story high. Therefore, he has an existing nonconformity to the 15-foot setback. Under 17.1, if the ZBA gives him a special permit, he can build a new house 2.5 stories high, a few feet from your lot line. The result is a 30 to 40-foot-high towering wall, 60 feet long, only 10 to 20 feet from your house. Under 17.1, this is not a new nonconformity, just extending the existing one. Period. Allowed. Period. Next example. Every house in the street is set back 23 to 25 feet from the road and one story high. One house that is 23 feet back is sold and the new owner decides to raise and replace. Since he is 23 feet off the street, he has an existing nonconformity. Therefore, if the ZBA gives him a special permit, he can move his house to only a few feet off the street and go up 2.5 stories high. Not a new conformity, just extending an old one. Period. Allowed. Period. Last example. Houses on the water and is not set back 50 feet from water or wetlands. They have an existing nonconformity. They want a new McMansion to be the biggest in the area and the closest to the water. They can extend the existing nonconformity and build right up to the water's edge if the ZBA gives them a special permit. Period. Allowed. Period. The extension of nonconformities under 17.1 has been badly abused by the Board of Appeals. It has harmed too many neighbors, it has, it has harmed too many neighbors and neighborhoods already. It needs to stop until we can create a better set of rules based on objective metrics. Oh, sorry, metrics. Okay. Five, Section 17.1 harms neighborhoods and enables the exploitation of wetlands and waters. By converting your round, year-round or moderate-sized houses into maximum-sized mansions or Airbnbs, local and year-round families get squeezed out while a few individual benefit, individuals benefit financially. At a time when we need more moderate sizes, more, excuse me, more moderate-sized homes for families, we should not be incentivizing the building of mega mansions in our zoning bylaws. Yet this is exactly what Section 17.1 did. People who live next door to many of the 17.1 raise and replaces are harmed and they do not have the capacity or money to protect themselves. While there are plenty of good people in the neighborhood, in town, who raise and replace responsibly, or after talking to their neighbors, or after talking to their neighbors, we unfortunately also have many speculators or newcomers who just don't care about, just don't care what anyone thinks. The elderly and longtime residents get hurt by predatory development under 17.1. 17.1 harms our waters. You can only put so much house on a small lot with sandy soil. Our regular soil, our regular soil, you need one to two acres to dilute the nitrogen from three to four, all right, I'm going to start that again. On our regular soil, you need one to two acres to dilute the nitrogen from a three-to-four bedroom house. In sand, wastewater travels much faster at a three to five foot per day. For houses on the bays and ponds, that means when someone flushes, the water arrives in the bay or pond within days and is essentially the same chemical form it left the toilet. Section 17.1 has enabled house sizes to grow even further beyond what the land can handle and the water can take.
Thank you.
Did I leave anything out, Glenn?
Yeah, I did.
Yes.
Okay. I apologize for the technical problems that we're having. Does the board members have any comments? Rob?
Uh, no.
Dennis?
No.
John, can you hear us?
I can.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, I'm not sure where to start. No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Karen? No, I don't. As many as you know, I sat on the board when 17.1 was first introduced. I begged the proponent, which was the zoning board of appeals, to please include the phrase, quote, "detrimental to the neighborhood." "To the neighborhood." They refused. So now the bylaw says detrimental, doesn't say detrimental to the neighborhood. I've sat in and watched ZBA meetings where they have clearly stated that they are the ones to decide if it's detrimental or not. Not the abutters, not the neighbors. I begged them not to do that. I predicted that it would construct, allow the construction of McMansions. Not every homeowner that uses raise and replace 17.1 has proposed something that does not fit the neighborhood. A lot of people have used it to really have a clear pathway to a nice redevelopment of their property. And you know I'm a proponent of property, people who own their property, I'm a proponent of property owner rights. Okay?
Yeah. I, I, could I say one?
You know, you're making me chuckle, but I'll, I'll recognize you afterwards. I did suggest that they look at different bylaws in town, I mean, on the Cape. Provincetown has a raise and replace bylaw that sets limits on what can replace what you're getting rid of, what you're demolishing. I suggested, for example, why don't we allow something like the footprint can increase 25% or by a percentage? And they refused. So I'm glad that, that, you know, people have brought this forward because it's something, and I know the neighborhood did meet with the town planner about constructing, this was about over, it was well over a year ago.
About a year ago.
You know, constructing something. But I think with some of the cases that are going through and the land court case about 228 waiting path lane, place. I, I really think it's important that we consider this and consider supporting it. Because without getting rid of that, there's, abutters and neighborhoods have absolutely no recourse because people are not listening to them. They're putting in petitions that, I mean, I was sitting at a, at a meeting, as a special permit granting authority, you have to recognize all correspondence that come in and I'm, I'm sure it was just a mistake, but they had a petition from the neighborhood and that didn't even get recognized. It didn't get addressed, it wasn't explained why they were not considering it. I just felt that the neighborhood was really disempowered and I, I don't agree with that.
No, I, I like this. I think we should get rid of it.
I think that the planning board is here to help resolve this, but we won't get any, we won't make any progress unless this piece is replaced, is, is, is deleted from the zoning bylaw. So the next person I'm going to recognize is John Filon. Go ahead, John.
John, you still there?
I'm sorry?
So the, I know that you, it's the chairwoman, I know that the, that you wanted, it's, you wanted to say something. I've recognized you, John.
No, I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
I, I have one more.
I'm sorry?
Who, who was speaking?
That was me, Mary. Could I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
You know, if maybe you can repeat it if no one can hear it. The state says you cannot do this without the neighborhood, right? So that's the data math. You cannot extend without the neighborhood. And what, what are we doing when an entire street or neighborhood of 15 people, 18 neighbors shows up and says, we don't agree with this, this is terrible for where we live? And it gets approved anyways. It, it's just wrong. It, it, it is just wrong. It's wrong legally from the state and it's, it's wrong morally for the people who live in these neighborhoods.
So what Mr. McCarthy has said is that we cannot go forward making these decisions without input from the neighborhood, that what we are doing, and I'm assuming he means as, we're doing as a town, we're doing these changes without the neighborhood. You have a street of 15 houses, they're being ignored. What would, what, what is happening is wrong legally, it's not in compliance with state statute, and it's wrong morally. How'd I do? Go ahead, Rob.
I, I totally support this, uh, this-
Use your mic. Yep.
Article. And I think maybe to eliminate any ambiguity, what constitutes a neighborhood should be clearly delineated? Is it a butters? Is it a butters within 300 feet? Is it whatever? Because a Board of Appeals determines neighborhoods if it's not defined and, and act, act responsibly.
How does the state define neighborhood? Well, I think, I think a butters would be called neighbors, right?
It's much broader than a butters. Neighborhood is much broader than a butters.
I think, I think it's safe to say that a neighborhood is broader than direct abutters, possibly a butters of 300 feet.
More than that, absolutely.
Yeah, but, but to eliminate any ambiguity from a Board of Appeals, I think it's best to have a defined neighborhood.
I agree.
Is it an association? Probably not. Is it a distance from, is it the number of, you know, people in a square mile of it? But if you leave it as neighborhood, then that's left to interpretation by the Board of Appeal and they may act against common sense.
So it comes from Chapter 48, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. Extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming use in the neighborhood.
It, it needs to mirror that, it's required to mirror that. You cannot do less.
Say that again, Glenn.
You cannot do less than that statement. It is not allowed for the town to adopt a bylaw that's weaker than that.
So what he's saying, that, is that Mass. General Law?
I do agree that someone should look up the case law of, of neighborhoods.
Okay. Okay. But, so Glenn is saying that Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, which is the zoning act, is the minimum that a town can zone to. You, you can't, you have to meet Mass. General Law 48. This is what Glenn is saying. You can't do less, your zoning can't do less. It can do more, but not less.
Does the town council know that?
Does, does our town council know that?
Yeah.
I think you should call him and ask him.
Yeah.
Can I ask Glenn some questions, Mary?
He knows and I think you could have him confirm it. He, he is definitely well aware of it.
I mean, I think the land court judge knows that and that's where it's coming from.
It's stated in the decision. But, but there, back to the neighborhood, it is important for that to be defined, not defined, but to be clarified. That's a fact. You know, what, what the neighborhood is is has already been decided by case law. We just need to look it up. And town council could do that as well.
Okay, so Glenn is, Glenn is proposing that there is, there is case law to help define that. Did, did you want to-
I have some questions for Glenn, if that's all right.
Oh, go ahead. So Glenn, can you, can you hear us when we speak? Okay, go ahead, go ahead. So I'm going to recognize the town planner.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pose some questions, Glenn, just for the purposes of kind of laying the groundwork. Because I, I think I fully understand the purpose and intent of the petition. We spoke, we've spoken on this particular issue for a year or two now. And the, the way I look at the problem, and it's, it's a problem with the application of the Board of Appeal's discretion in the situations of raising replaces. I understand that. I think that's a really valid concern and something that can be addressed in a manner like Mary has suggested, by defining what detriment is, right?
And some parameters.
With parameters.
That's what I, that's what I really suggested with some parameters.
But at the same time, I do have general concern with the repeal as proposed for a couple reasons. And I, and this, and I'm, I'm kind of going to try and facilitate this discussion through questions. But wouldn't you agree that Chapter 48, Section 6, and, and Section 17, Continuance Extensions and Alterations in the town of Mashpee is still a discretionary approval by a written finding of the Board of Appeals and is effectively the same process as Raise and Replace? So one could conceivably continue, extend, or alter their existing nonconformity the same way you've contemplated in your memo to the planning board? So my concern is with the repeal of Raise and Replace, that anyone outside of Papaneset, where these issues truly apply, are going to lose their ability to do this in the best manner and most cost-effective manner as is feasible. So I think there is a problem with the application of discretion here, specific to Papaneset overlay. And I, I would agree that there are language issues, as noted in the waiting place.
I'm going to kick that back to you. So what did people do before 17.1?
So my understa, so they would use continuance extensions, alterations, so, and I think that there's a reasonable case to be made to continue to allow that. I would also claim that as well. But when I first started, I was on the tail end of, of Raise and Replace and the former building commissioner had an opinion that it couldn't continue. Continuance extensions, alterations could not be allowed to continue unless you leave a wallop or some weird architectural feature. And there was a kind of paired issue with that in a, in a flood zone, if you make a 50% or more of the total value improvement to your home, you had to become FEMA compliant. So it, it, the, the special permit process for Raise and Replace was kind of in recognition of that.
It was no special permit process.
No, I'm saying the reason why they adopted 17.1.
Was to introduce a special permit process.
A special permit process to, to effectively mirror 48, Section 6, but allow someone the flexibility to remove their foundation. And so I still think there's an argument there and I still want to deal with the discretion issue, particularly in Papaneset. But I have concern with someone down the end of Main Street in an old cruddy home that wants to raise and replace it tomorrow, won't be able to do that. I'm concerned about that.
Not true.
So Glenn, so Glenn reply, wait, wait.
I understand Glenn says it's not true, but our commissioner and council has opined otherwise. That's my concern.
That, okay, so he's, he's-
Thank you, Evan.
Glenn said, Glenn said that's not true. So Glenn, why do we know that's not true? Why do you claim it's not true?
Because if you look at the 70 lady and places that were applied for since 2018, none of them-
Stop, stop. So if you look at how many?
The 70 projects that were approved, none of them on high seas in downtown.
Mr. McCarthy is saying that there were 70?
Bangles Island, Monument Sky Island, Pirate Cove.
17. You're making, so you're making his point.
But there was just one on Main Street.
Okay, so, so what Glenn is saying, that there were 17 projects before 2018, 70, 7 zero, projects before 2018 that were successful, raised and replaces. Is there anything else, Glenn, you would like to say?
Yeah, I've taken enough time. This is not for your average raise and replace in Mashpee. It's for huge expansions on the bays. And coming to John's and Ashum, and Mashpee Wakebe Pond next.
Okay, so, so Mr. McCarthy is saying that, that, that 17.1 enables unusual raise and replaces. It's not, it's not concentrated or only, it does not only apply to the neighborhoods of Papaneset, but also will apply across town into places, neighborhoods like John's Pond and what else did you say?
All of them, yep, Wakebe Pond, it's coming.
Wakebe Pond.
It's coming to any place that has a small lot and it's going to be coming next to your house next.
Says it's coming to your house next. All right, no, you're not recognized, John. Go ahead, Dennis.
I have, first of all, but that's, my daughter-
Use your mic.
My daughter built a house and they had to leave that for one wallop. So that made them, couldn't build the house they really wanted. They had the land and everything, but they had to leave that wallop. And when this was, get to be passed, I fought for this because I think most of the people who were against this were from Papaneset. Because they already had their big house and they didn't want the house beside them to be big, to block their view. But people all over the, the town were having a hard time to replace their house because they had to leave that one wallop. So I don't know where you got the information, but if we go back the old way, you're still going to have to leave that one wallop. And, and that changes what type of house you want because you have to keep it with that footprint.
I think we need to fix Raise and Replace, but I don't think we should repeal it, is my point.
No, I don't think we should repeal it or fix it.
Um, how do we fix it?
Create, define within the bylaw itself what substantial detriment means in places like Papaneset. What are the, how much can you expand? What, you know, in a, some sort of process with the neighborhood. Dennis does it exactly like this.
Town of Dennis.
Town of Dennis.
Not Dennis Baldwin.
Town of Dennis, Town of Dennis does it just like this, where they provide defined parameters for how much one could continue, extend, or alter. So that there is some reasonable predictability that they're not going to have this proliferation of bizarre homes in an otherwise-
A nice neighborhood.
-small neighborhood fabric.
Keep that thought. I take a motion to extend the public hearing for Willabon South, Southport to 8:50.
Second, I mean, uh-
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Dennis?
I-
John?
Why are we extending?
So we have some discussion. Why are we extending Willabon and Self, Self Worth? We're extending it because we were supposed to, we've opened it, we continued it to 8:20. It is now 8:40. We have to extend it again. We have to continue it. We have to continue it to 8:50.
Yep. That's fine, thank you.
Okay, that's a yes. Karen Faulkner, yes, and I'm a yes. That's by roll call vote. Okay, sorry, guys.
Are we ever starting with this?
I don't know. Evan, looks like he has some more on his piece of paper. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I mean, that's, that's effectively it. I mean, I, I just have, I believe, 48, Section 6, and continuance extensions and alterations functions nearly identically to Raise and Replace. It just, Raise and Replace provides proper owners with a bit more flexibility on their properties. So I, I, I don't feel like the repeal of Raise and Replace does anything but potentially harm people with plans. I think we need to improve Raise and Replace to deal with the isolated situation in Papaneset that he's talking about. That's what I think. And I would be concerned with the town voting to repeal this. With, you know.
Glenn, do, do you have any response to that? Okay.
I'm good.
Any other question, questions from board members? No more questions from board members? I'd open up the discussion to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is John Miller. I live on Shellback Way. I'm speaking for myself, not as the town moderator. I've, in my 20 years in Mashpee, I've, I've never encountered a need to address this through any homeownership or expansion projects that's been on, on, on my list. But just hearing the, the debate tonight and the discussion, what I'm hearing is that the, the core question is the confidence level in the members, in the, in the majority members of the Board of Appeals to act in what others might think is the best interest of the town. So I think to Evan's point, from what I've heard tonight, repealing this provision, I, I guess, at town meeting, if I were to vote on this, I would be asking myself whether the absence of this current 17 dot 1 provision enhances the likelihood that the Board of Appeals is going to be more proper or more thoughtful or less arbitrary and less subjective than they currently are with this provision in place. So if, if you can, regardless of what geographic area of the town that you're talking about, if 17 dot 0 that oversees all of this still allows somebody to accomplish what you can otherwise achieve with 17 dot 1, while it might send a message to the Board of Appeals that doesn't really carry any authority, I don't see that it provides any, any benefit and perhaps provides a caution that there are extraordinary circumstances that require more thoughtful consideration by those that are making the decision. If, if the workaround for that is to make it clear that it's the character of the, of the neighborhood that we're not seeking detrimental activity on, it seems to me that it would be better to address that rather than dilute the tools that are available to the decision-makers in the town on, on, on how this sort of courtesy could be extended.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment?
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I just want to say that I attended a couple of these zoning Board of Appeal meetings where the attorney for one of the people who's wants to do the Raise and Replace kept saying, it's not substantially more detrimental. And I kept sitting there saying, one tiny, even little bit more detrimental is bad for the neighborhood. It's already detrimental. I mean, they're admitting that it's detrimental, but they're saying, well, it's not substantially more detrimental. Anything that's more detrimental is affects the whole neighborhood. And at one of these meetings, there were abutters there and they brought pictures and they showed exactly what was going to happen if the house was, that was being proposed could be built as proposed, which was basically doubling the size of its footprint. And they said, you know, we've, we've had the, our house, the abutters, for generations and if this house gets built, we will only be able to see the water from just a tiny little corner of our deck and that's it. And I think it, why it may be true that the problem is the, the willingness of zoning Board of Appeal members to grant these things, I think that, that the understanding for the town is we don't want things to be more detrimental at, we don't want them to be detrimental at all, but certainly not even a tiny bit more detrimental. And that has to be our goal in all of this. And I think that this is a step in the direction of getting there. Does it, we need to have additional language? Possibly. I'm not a writer of, like, I don't know how to do that, but I think it's really, it was an insult to those abutters who were there with their pictures to be completely ignored. Thank you.
Is there anyone, yes, come on up. Is there anyone, yes, come on up.
Marjorie Hecht, Hoopole Road. As someone who lives on a pond where there are a lot of small cottages and where real estate agents are trying to buy up property, you know, we'll buy your house, this is John's Pond and there's a lot of activity there for people buying up houses, I'm very worried because I would not like to see the nature of our neighborhood change. And having looked at all the pictures of the behemoths that are now on Papaneset, it's really scary. And if those are being Airbnb'd, it would destroy my neighborhood, even one of them with all the new traffic. I mean, now we have this construction going on, but normally it's very difficult in the summer to get to where I live and to get out of the neighborhood near the fairgrounds. So I would be in favor of the repeal. If some things have to be added to the existing law, there's always the October town meeting. But I, having watched some of the zoning Board of Appeal meetings, that's really a farce, especially when there's been a land court decision and they then say, oh, well, we'll continue on the way we have been. There's something very wrong there. And if the new law has, wouldn't allow you to redo your house because you needed an existing wall, that could be fixed, you know? Right now, we really need to fix this and I think we need to repeal it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? All right. So any final comments from board members?
I don't think we should repeal this, but rewrite it a little better Evan, like Evan suggested, because it's not just Papaneset, it's the whole town. And, you know, I thought you had overlay district of Papaneset, you were talking about that. Is that still going on?
Well, that's, it began. It, it, it didn't get far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so seeing no other comments, I take a motion to close the 710 public hearing on the warrant articles.
So be.
Is there a second? Okay, by roll call vote, Dennis?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Okay.
Mary, are we going to vote on the article?
Absolutely. So now what we do, now we've closed, we've closed the public hearing. So thank you, everybody. I know it's late. Thank you for people who zoomed in and watching this at home. So now what we do is we take article by article, and I'll take a motion to recommend the article to town meeting for passage by town, by, to recommend the art, that town meeting approve the article. Okay? So, and if there's discussion after that motion and second, then we'll discuss further. So regarding warrant article 30, the chair will accept a motion to recommend its approval by town meeting.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So any discussion on article 30? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Dennis?
Yes.
John?
No.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary, yes. So Rob, I don't think Rob votes on this. Okay, all right. Sorry, Rob. But thank you for participating. Article 31, the chair would accept a motion to recommend the approval of article 31 to town meeting.
So be.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? By roll call vote, Dennis Balzerini?
Yes.
John Filone?
No.
Karen Faulkner?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Article 32, the chair accepts a motion to recommend passage of article 32 by town meeting.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? By roll call vote, Dennis Balzerini?
Yes.
John Filone?
No.
Karen Faulkner?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Article 43, the chair accepts a motion, would accept a motion to recommend town meeting approve article 43.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? By roll call vote, Dennis?
Yes.
Balzerini? John Filone?
No.
Karen Faulkner?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Article 44, the chair would accept a motion that the, that the planning board recommend town meeting approve article 44.
So be.
Is there a second? Second, by Karen Faulkner? Any discussion? By roll call vote, Dennis Balzerini?
Yes.
John Filone?
No.
Karen Faulkner?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Article 45, the chair, the chair accepts an article, would accept an article, I'm just, it's getting, I'm getting tired. The chair would accept a motion to recommend town meeting approve article 45.
Second.
So Dennis, did you make the motion?
No.
No.
I'm not voting against.
Me too.
Yeah, so I'm not going to make a motion to accept this.
Okay. The chair would accept a motion that the planning board recommend that town meeting does not approve article 45.
So be.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'm just going to say that if we don't repeal this, there will be no activity. It will not be done. The neighborhood has already approached staff. No work has been done. There's no motivation until we repeal this. And I'm not taking your comment.
That's unfair.
No, and I'm not blaming you.
That's an unfair case.
Oh, my goodness. I am not blaming staff.
I hope so.
I am not blaming staff. It's, there's no political will until people cannot do what they're doing now. If they are, if they keep being allowed to build McMansions, there'll be no emphasis, no political will to fix the zoning bylaw. And it is broken if you go to those neighborhoods. And it all started, the floodgates opened in 2018. That's my comment. Is there any other discussion by planning board members? Okay. All right, so if you vote yes now, you're recommending that town meeting does not approve this warrant article. Okay?
Yep.
Dennis?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary Wagon, no. Okay. So now the town planner has the job of writing up our votes, sending it to the town moderator for town meeting. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Does anybody want to break before we start our next matter?
Let it roll. Let's let it roll. I think they're ready.
All right, so seeing that the appointed time has finally arrived, okay? I think I already read this in, but the chair opens up the public hearing. The applicant is Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. The location is 275 Quinna Quissett Avenue, Assessor Map, 69 Block 32. The request is applicant proposes to modify the Willow Bend Country Club special permit to construct a 14-unit single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Club. With these changes, the total unit count for Willow Bend project would be increased to 287 if the board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinna Quissett Avenue into the Willow Bend special permit as allowed. 287, 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected and to and served by the existing privately owned wastewater treatment plant which serves the entire Willow Bend project. So I'd like to, I'd like to acknowledge the, and recognize the project proponent and ask them, they gave us revised plans and kind of ask them for any updates. Is everybody comfortable, do you want a quick summary of the proposal, Rob? Okay. So why don't you just go through, we got new plans and let us know what changed.
Mary, just real quick, as a point of order, is Rob seated on this or is John seated on this?
So we have the opportunity to have five members, right? You can, you, just, I'm saying this, I'm going back just so I make sure that I'm doing this right. We have, when we want five members for you, it's, the approval of the special permit is a super majority of four members out of five. Okay? We're a special permit granting authority. In Massachusetts, you have to have four positive votes. Our first meeting, who was here?
John was the only absence.
John was not here.
And Rob was actually not here as well.
And Rob wasn't here. Okay. Okay. So you had Dennis Balzerini, Mary Wagon, Karen Faulkner. We were all here.
Remember Mike?
Yes.
Okay, and Mike. Okay, and that was, I don't know, March 8th?
March 1st.
March 1st.
March 1st, okay. So today is the 19th. We have Dennis Balzerini, Mary Wagon, Karen Faulkner. The three of us can seat, be seated. Okay? We're missing Michael. We now have John Filone. John Filone can be seated. He has the right to do that because he's only missed one.
Correct.
Okay? But you're still short somebody. I'm of the opinion that I can seat Rob Hanson. Would you agree with that?
I don't know because my, John's not left yet, so.
John Filone, are you still present?
I am.
Okay. Now, now, I don't, I don't, I don't want to speak out of school or make anybody feel bad, but it's my understanding that we have elections on May 6th.
Right.
And that Mr. Filone did not pull nomination papers. So in some.
Why would that make me feel bad?
Well, I don't. And that, and that somebody else has, Mr. Dale Oakley.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So after May, after May 6th, it's possible that we have a new composition. Okay?
Understood.
So it's your application. I can't, I can't, I can't force anybody not to sit that has the right to sit.
Well, my, if I may, first of all, thank you, Jack McLeany Attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties. You know, my understanding is Mr. Hanson, we cannot vote tonight. Because Mr. Hanson has not had a chance to review the file, et cetera. So we are inevitably talking about the first, the first meeting in May to bring this to a conclusion, which we would very much like to do by that point.
Which is May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Which is before the election.
Before the election. You know, it's my understanding, Mr. Hanson could sit tonight and Mr. Richardson could also potentially still be available to vote on May 3rd using the Mullen Rule. Is that, is that right? So I have no objection and I would, I would love to see Mr. Mullen, Mr. Mullen, it is late, Mr. Hanson sit tonight. And then, you know, we recognize that we'll be back here on the 3rd.
So what, what do you want us to do? Do you want me to sit, seat Rob or not?
Yes, but with the understanding that Mr. Richardson would be seated, it would still be eligible to vote.
Would that automatically bump Michael out of the race?
I think, I think it's either Rob is seated and he votes on May 3rd, or he is not seated and Mike returns. If Mike is not available, then you have a four-person vote on May 3rd.
Okay.
But I have, you know, I have every anticipation that Mike Richardson will be here on May 3rd, but I think.
We had every, we had every expectation he'd be here tonight.
Right, right.
So it's your application. What do you want me to do?
I think I would wait till we have a full board, you know, because one vote and you lose.
No, I understand that.
Hey, can I have one more question? How can we sit Rob if John's still on the board?
Because I only have one, two, three, four people.
But you're essentially bumping Mike then.
Yeah, I mean.
Right, how do you do that?
Because he's not here and I can seat somebody in an absence of a member.
Well, I think in that, in that circumstance, with all due respect to Mr. Hanson, you know, we would prefer to wait and have the full board, but we would like to make our presentation tonight and hope that he could avail, Mr. Richardson can avail himself of.
That's what, that's the direction I want. I just wanted you because it's your application.
No, I understood it. I appreciate the, you know.
It took me a chart to figure out if we were to, so, so Rob, the chair is not seating you for this, for this.
Chair, could I just ask a question? What happens if Mr. Filone is not a board member on the 3rd? Then you're back to.
He could, he, he is still a board member on the 3rd.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Very good. Never mind. I thought that was, thought that was the problem, but never mind.
It could be a problem.
Well, if he's not there, yes.
If he's not there or we don't.
No, no.
If we don't.
I thought he was absolutely not going to be there, but no.
If we, if he's not there.
Thank you.
And we want you here, John, but if, or it gets continued.
Right.
To after the election.
Understood.
So the, again, the chair is not seating Rob Hanson for this special permit. You almost made it. Oh, go ahead Dennis.
Would it be nice if Rob took a tour of the property by himself so he understands where this is going?
Well, he's not going to decide on it. I'm not seating him.
But, okay.
It's getting too complicated.
Yeah, all right, never mind.
Because then if Michael, if Michael attends the next meeting, there's a conflict.
Yeah, okay, got you.
I don't think I can have six people.
Understood.
You're a lawyer, I don't know what the case law is.
We're comfortable with where we are, thank you then.
Great. Okay, so the, just to be clear, the members who are seating, who are seated at this are Dennis Balzerini, Michael Richardson, John Filone, Karen Faulkner and Mary Wagon. Okay, so here we go. Go ahead.
Great. Just very quickly, you know, we are hoping to wrap this up, as I said. Application was filed on January 20th. The last hearing was on March 1. There was a site walk on March 10 at the hearing on, and then it was continued on March 29th because we didn't have a quorum. At the meeting on March 1, the board asked for a number of background materials, including all the prior modifications, the prior Cape Cod Commission decisions, a summary from our engineer of the operation of the sewerage treatment plant, a breakdown of every lot within Willow Bend and confirmation of approval from the fire department and I think most significantly in terms of the site planning and updated landscape plan to reflect adjustment of the cart path and enhancement of the buffer. All of that has been provided. And I think I'll let Matt Eddy, our engineer, speak to the, to the changes to the site plan since March 1, you know, which we've tried to address some of the board's concerns regarding the buffer and cart path, et cetera.
So. All righty. Good evening. For the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxton I Engineering and Surveying. As Jack just introduced, we listened to the comments from the board at the hearing on the 1st. We also then had the site meeting with the board members and listened to your input there. And I felt, and I hope that you did as well, that that was a productive site meeting and that it helped you, you know, see the project and the vision of the project. With that, the, I don't know if you want, I mean, we don't necessarily need the plans up, it's up to the board if they want to see it, the.
Can I put them up there? Oh, yes. I don't know if any member wants to gather around the full-size set of plans. Is there any full-size set of plans with Dennis and Karen?
No.
Let me see what I see here. So from now on.
So from now on, regardless of anybody, what they say, please bring full set of plans for everybody, unless you're going to have boards.
Yeah, I think we submitted them.
I'll have to come up and try to go through these.
You want to bring your chair over here?
Sure.
We'll be looking at it.
Why don't you sit on the right side of me, Dennis?
I'm just going to stand behind you.
Evan, we could probably just put up sheet 3.0. I think that's really the-
All right, so we're going to turn to 3.0. Yeah, you guys flip it. To 3.0. Oh, I have-
We can look at that.
This is for you guys. This is new to the package. Did you get the, did you get the correspondence from the Ron Hawks?
Yes, we got the butter, yeah, one, one letter that-
Okay, and then that was, that was from a while ago, from Tom Pedal. The last time we had it in our packet, it was, it didn't have every piece on the front. Okay. All right, so this is 3.0.
Yep, and so, you know, we can probably just stay on this sheet. The main modification that we did, I mean, obviously the layout is all staying the same. And actually, I'll point over here so you can all see the screen better. But the layout of the units is all staying the same, that's unchanged. But the main point of discussion was the buffer along Quiniquisit. And we realigned the cart path. You can see it was, you know, it was right along the edge of the right-of-way. It was on the lot, but along the edge of the right-of-way, we pulled it in substantially. We've relocated the stormwater forebay, brought the cart path to the south of that forebay, and then shifted the village green area and the cart path further from Quiniquisit Ave to expand that buffer. The cart path meanders and its closest point to the paved road is at 28 feet now. And there are points of it that are actually 39 feet away. So, I mean, it's, we've provided a reasonable buffer there. There was also, as part of the submission, which I believe you should have, but I did have, I printed out reduced copies as well, the landscape plan-
Yes.
That was prepared, showing the enhanced plantings along Quiniquisit Ave. Again, hopefully you had a chance to look at that. I think that the plan for that landscaping looks like a very well-done plan. I think it'll provide, you know, the visual screening that I think the board was, you know, concerned about. We then also responded and made some minor revisions to the plans based on Mr. Pesci's comments. I'm not going to walk through every individual comment unless you would like me to. I think they were overall, they were, you know, relatively minor. We hit, the, the main ones were, you know, the fire department access. We got the fire department approval, which they had approved previously, but they provided written-
What date was that letter? Is that the 2, is that the February 27th?
I've got to look it up.
Sorry.
Yeah, February 27th was the letter.
And it's only been one?
Correct.
Okay, good.
So we've, we addressed all of these comments. We had some, both Ed and I and Evan had some, you know, back and forth on the information that you provided, just, you know, some clarifications. There were a few minor clarifications left that Ed would like to just work through with me. I'll let him expound on those. But again, I think it's all very minor. But we've addressed all of his other comments again, and they were all generally, you know, minor in nature. There was some shifting of some catch basins, riprap added, you know, miscellaneous items like that. Again, I mean, if you wanted me to get into any detail, I'm happy to, but I don't think that it was necessary. And as far as you would ask about cost of restoring the bogs, what I really just kind of like to hit on is the, you know, the benefits that are really being provided by this project, and I truly believe public benefits. The restoration of the bogs, which is over two and a half acres of taking out active cranberry bogs and converting those to natural wetlands. The approximate construction cost for that is around $250,000. The amount of the nitrogen and pesticides treatment, because that's an active agricultural use, as you know, for doing the cranberry farming. With that taking out of activity, the removal of the nitrogen, of the pesticides, et cetera, which affect not only just the system there, but this quicker run, as you all know, runs down to Shoestring Bay. So there's a significant public benefit to that aspect. The other piece that's a significant benefit is this project, if it's not approved, we've did, we've submitted a concept and our plan. We believe that three lots can be done by right here. Those would be individual lots that would not be part of Willow Bend, would not be part of the special permit. They wouldn't get connected to the wastewater treatment plant that have septic systems. The three septic systems on there would provide additional nitrogen load to the downstream estuary to Shoestring Bay, whereas this project eliminates all of that, eliminates the existing septic system that's in the, the house that exists currently. And again, a cost and an expense, the project proposes to extend the sewer to pick up all of these proposed houses and bring them to the wastewater treatment facility in Willow Bend. So again, a reduction in nitrogen, and I'll say a significant reduction in nitrogen if there were three lots that were done here versus what's being proposed. So those aspects are significant public benefits. They truly are. I mean, it's not just, it's not just about this project, it's the downstream aspect. Everybody knows fully what's going on with the estuaries and, and the embayments and so forth across the Cape, not just in Mashpee. And then additionally, an additional benefit as well is that stormwater management area. Again, trying to enhance the buffer along Quiniquisit, but we still put that forebay in there that is picking up runoff, existing runoff off of Quiniquisit Road and providing pre-treatment for stormwater runoff, where it's currently, that's not occurring. It's literally going right into the wetland right off of the shoulder of the road. So those are significant benefits at a significant cost to Willow Bend to provide those, both the restoration of the bogs, the extension of the sewer, et cetera.
Is there anything more that you're going to, that I need to continue to look?
Yeah, no, I mean, not, I don't think so really. On the plans, really, the main aspect of the modifications was just, you know, was the realignment, pulling that cart path off of the road to allow a larger buffer. The landscape plan that's been provided to then enhance that buffer, because there'll have to be some grading there, so we'll maintain as much of the existing vegetation, but then it'll be infilled with a very full buffer, both under story and upper story, to provide, you know, the screening that the board, you know, had mentioned at the last hearing. So, and then again, the other changes throughout the plan set, again, were minor in nature based on addressing Ed's comments, so.
I found Ed's letter. That's what I was looking for over here. I was like, I know I had it, I had my notes.
And so I think, you know, with that-
So, so what did you change based on, so-
On Ed's, yeah, you want me to walk through?
Item 3, I had notes.
Item 3?
Under Site Plan and Layout Utilities, 3.
Yeah, item 3, that was the-
A, B, and C. Did you change anything based on those three comments?
Yeah, we added the fire hydrant. So this, this went through plan review prior to planning board with the fire department involved, obviously. And they approved that through plan review. We then reached out after the planning board hearing, requested written response from the fire department, which they provided via an email saying that they had approved the plan. They also, I then believe, provided a letter to you, Evan, as well, approving the-
An email?
I'm sorry?
Just an email, I think.
Right, which we forwarded, I believe.
No, I got one from the deputy chief. It's on the other end in the back.
Yeah, there was a letterhead, I thought as well, yeah.
Could you point out where those fire hydrants are at the entrance and at the end?
Yeah, the fire hydrants are, we could go to the utility plan, but I can show you where they are. And so you don't have to switch around. There's a fire hydrant being proposed right here, which is what the, that's the one that we added. That's the one that the fire department requested. They actually didn't even say it was necessarily required because it's an existing hydrant about here on Quiniquisit. But we agreed during plan review, we said, yeah, no, let's, we'll put the hydrant in. We think that makes sense. That way the hose isn't going across Quiniquisit if they ever had to use it. So we added the hydrant here, and then there's another hydrant located down here just before their turnaround. That's where they, they want the two hydrants. And so that's, those are where those hydrants are provided. The other aspect is the turning movement. We adjusted it graphically, the turning movement for the tower truck. The fire department, the fire department approved the layout.
3.4.
Yep, but we, but Ed and I, that's one of the things we're still talking about. If we need to do any geometry modification here further, we will. It's my opinion that we don't need to. I think Ed just wants to look at it a little bit further with me, and we can do that offline if necessary, because there is some play in that turning movement. If we need to modify, and all it would be, was, you know, it would just be increasing that radius there on that entrance. But again, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, right? We want, obviously, we've got to make sure we have the access, and I believe we do. We don't want to make the entrance wider and more pavement than you need because it also then goes, speaks back to the buffer area that you want, et cetera. And just, you know, in general, you don't want to have excessively wide entrances if you don't need them, so. And-
So that would be the only option right now is to widen it?
Yeah, I mean, and what it would be is that this radius right here, it would be literally probably just increasing that radius slightly. So it just, it would pull that pavement edge out a little bit. The other thing Ed and I were talking about is you could do what he was calling, you know, talking about hardening the shoulder.
Increasing a radius means?
The, the turning-
The arch is tighter or wider?
Wider.
It's wider, it's wider. It's-
So your radius is increasing? Got it, okay.
So right now, we have a 40-foot radius on that, which is pretty significant. To make that, we would go to even a larger, it would go to like a 50-foot radius, something like that, 45 or 50-foot radius.
I see, okay, all right. Just had to get the math straight in my head.
But so, no, so absolutely, you know, if we need to adjust any, you know, minor geometry there, we absolutely will. And I were looking at that, if, on the turning template plan, the tower truck actually has more room for maneuvering as they enter that approach. You've got to, you know, keep in mind that that's a graphic that you're seeing on that turning template plan. That's a, you know, one graphic aspect of it. So we just can adjust that graphic and I think it's going to be fine. But again, if we need to adjust it, we will absolutely adjust that. And then so, and then, so that was A and C. And then, so B was the community drive, 16-foot wide, proposed concrete.
So B, you still have a 16-foot wide with a 1-foot wide Cape Cod berm on each side?
Yep, and that was all, so nothing changed there, there was no discussion-
So the road is going to go like this for 16 feet?
Yeah, well, it'll be crowned slightly. And then you have a little berm, and then you have the shoulders. And we added a cross-section detail on sheet 7-1 or 7-0 or 7-1, which is just a full section of the road with the shoulders. And we added the H20 detail for the shoulders for the construction aspect. And that was what we had talked about on that.
Right. It's on 7.1.
Where is it on 7-1?
In the upper, upper right corner.
Oh, I see.
It refers to some other details, but-
So it's not, it's not like a pump like I-
Oh, no.
There you go.
Yeah, right, it's just a very-
And then this is a shoulder. Is it on both sides?
Yep.
Yep. I just, I still have a problem. I don't know if you buy the fire truck all the way down to the end, the big-
The tower, yeah.
How they get out of there, I still-
They-
I do too.
Back up very carefully.
No, I still have a problem.
I have a problem with that.
That turn, I mean, you'd see that maneuver, and again, we reviewed it with the fire department specifically. I mean, I'm going to say at least three times.
They're not responsible. We are. Thank you for getting the letter, but I don't, I have a problem with that too. Anything else, Dennis?
To me, I think you have one too many buildings in this layout.
Well, I'd like to address that.
That number 7.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see that eliminated, but, you know, put it back where, into the Willow Bend property where you're taking that house out to put it in there. It's too close and it, it don't fit with anything. I mean, it's on an angle, but I just have a problem with that one.
Anything else?
Nope, that's the structure.
How about the, what, what do you, you brought up the entranceway.
Yep. The entranceway is, it'd be fine, but when the truck comes all the way down to that last fire hydrant, that's all I understand. You've got to go on their lawns and everything just to turn around. That's a big truck.
And that's, that turning template that we provide-
Yep.
Shows the turning radii.
But it's still, we can still say it's-
I have actually gone sites to say no for, just for-
Yeah, I know.
Just for discussion, I'll say. On different sites, I have actually been invited to ride in the tower truck through a projects that we have designed to see the turning radii of the actual truck itself. The radii that we actually use is a little bit more conservative than that. So, I mean, the, the tower truck on the project, and so it was a hotel project that was a lot more going on with parking lots and stuff, but then it was making, it was making right returns.
Our primary, you know, responsibility is safety and access.
And absolutely, and so is my-
If we're not comfortable with it, it doesn't go-
And so is, I mean, mine is as well. I mean, and that, you have to look at the engineering of it, though. The car, you know, the road, the tower truck comes in, has turning radii defined and it's-
I have comments on it. You might want to save the argument for after my comments. So that's Dennis. John, would you like to go next?
I think they've made reasonable accommodations based on the feedback. I trust the fire chief and his assessment. I'm, I'm fine. I think it's a, I think it's a fine plan. I think you've made the adjustments that we've asked for. Thank you.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't even started to make comments because I wanted to go to a site visit before I really-
Yes, understood.
You know, so I just don't want you to be surprised that a board member is saying that you've accommodated every request so far, you haven't heard them all, so. Karen, do you want to go next?
Didn't we go, didn't we have a site visit?
Yes, but at the site visit, we don't deliberate, we only intake information. So this is the first time we're now gathered in a public setting where we can give comment back. Karen, do you have-
I think you've made reasonable accommodations.
Correct me if I'm wrong about anything. This, this is, this special permit, if you build these 14 units, will close out. Any further building in Willow Bend?
That, that's right. We have 287 as a-
87, okay.
As a permit cap, and-
And you would agree to that? That would be part of the agreement?
She's asking if you would accept a condition that would, that would put a final cap on the number of-
Well, they have to talk a special permit.
Okay. All right, let me-
No, no. It's going, if that's a condition, that's going to be rock-solid condition, you know, with town council's approval. So it's, it's not automatic. If you read all the special permits, that number goes up and down and up and down and up and down. And if you read all the special permits, there looks to be a legal pathway to go over the 287. So, good point, Karen. Thank you, go ahead.
These, the setback you have on here is 40 feet. The permit was an 89 permit, special permit?
87, yes, yeah.
87, okay. And it said it was 100 feet for a setback, correct?
That's correct.
What would it look like if we, if we made the decision that we wanted it to be 100 feet?
You know, the project is designed probably not viable at that point. You know, Matt could speak to that. And I would just say in context, the 100-foot was established in 1987 as part of the design of a 400-acre site. That requirement has been applied in some cases in expansions, but not in others. The board has waived it. For instance, when we did the area we call the Village, up Simons Road, where it butts Cranberry Ridge, the board specifically waived that 100-foot and allowed 40. Willow Circle, which was already disturbed, it didn't have a buffer. There is no specific buffer there. So I, I, I agree with the, with the point. It is in the permit, but I do believe this board has the authority-
What modification was that? Are you talking about that it got waived?
It would have been the modification for the Village, which would have been 2008 or '09. I don't have the specific one, but I, I can follow up and get it to you. Willow Circle was very recently, probably 2019 or so.
So what's, what streets?
Willow Circle.
Willow, and, and it was a less than 100-foot buffer?
Correct.
To what street?
Quiniquisit Ave.
Quiniquisit on Willow, yeah. Quistit on Willow, yeah.
Now, that was a different situation in the sense that there were two existing homes there, which were, you know, razed, and there was no vegetated buffer. That was 2000, I want to say 2019, I could get the exact numbers.
It's 20.
Originally approved Plan 2013 or so, and then reaffirmed by the board 2020.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Alright, so you're saying if the, if you, we wanted, required a 100-foot setback, that this project wouldn't be viable, why would it not be viable?
Well, I mean, I think the point Jack was trying to make is 100 feet, if you, if we pull 100-foot buffer, it's gonna come across here, so that means you're losing two units here. There was just some comments made by the board about unit seven that you didn't like. You then also have the Village Green area, all of that amended area would be gone as well. And you have to understand that just from a, you know, from a development standpoint for any project, there's, has to be a return on the investment. As we talked about the costs for extending the.
You're saying you only had 12 units?
I mean, I'm not, I don't know what the break even point is, I just, I have to defer to Jack and to Willow Bend, but.
Well, we would also be losing half of the second units, right, Matt, I mean, the garages.
If it went, yeah, well, 100 feet, you'd lose those two units, you'd then, you'd lose the garages on these two units here. There'd be no garages, so we would have to try to reconfigure that, so I'm not sure how that would play out. It's possible you could lose four, or maybe three of them. Not sure on that, I'd have to play with the layout. Because the 100 feet, I, I checked 100 feet off of Quinticwist, and it's, it clips, uh, it's unit number 13. It clips the very back corner at 100 feet.
It clips the back corner of 13?
Of 13, yeah, so that would mean if we were holding 100 feet, you then.
So you're saying four units?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying you'd lose four units?
You'd lose, it'd lose three units and possibly four. It doesn't clip number two, but the garage units, those would be in the 100 feet, so you couldn't have those. That's the driveway access to it, et cetera, so that would have to get reworked. I'm not sure how that would lay out. So you'd be potentially losing.
You're not recognized, sir.
That's Troy Miller.
Okay, you're not recognized, go ahead.
So, just trying to answer the question there, that, you know, it would be three, um, three to potentially four lots if it was at 100 feet. And that's not counting the number seven that you were just talking about.
Number seven is only 8.4 feet from six, Cottage Six. Is that safe in terms of fire?
Yeah, we reviewed that, the plan review, there's a building code aspect of, when you're less than 10 feet, there's a construction type for the exterior of the building from a fire aspect.
So you're doing something with the fire retardant material different than?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's the type of construction materials, the openings that you can have, so.
What, what did the zoning law in 85 say about proximity from one house to the other? You know?
Separation between structures? I don't think, I don't think zoning speaks to that, it's the building code.
The building code.
No, it's 20 feet.
Oh, it does speak to?
Truthfully, I don't know off the top of my head.
It's 20 feet.
So, is that something you'd want waived too?
I mean, if it's.
Uh, I'd have to go back and, and check that. I believe it doesn't apply to the garage, I mean, these distances we have are similar to the ones that have been respected throughout the.
It's all 20 feet, it's, it's repeatedly, it's repeatedly in your special permits and your amendments. The buildings need to be 20 feet, have a 20-foot separation.
Between six and seven.
I'm gonna look at the bylaw right now. I'm gonna try to find it.
1985 or?
1985. I know it's in the, I know it's in the special comments. I might not get to it, so, you can go ahead, Karen.
I'm just thinking, what you're saying is the, the project wouldn't be viable if you'd lose three or possibly four units. I mean, if you carved off the garage, that would really be bad.
Yeah, and I, I mean, let me, you know, be just direct about that point. I mean, we, we recognize that the project is, is dense. You know, we originally started with a, a proposal to rezone this piece. Because, don't forget, we are getting zero density benefit for this five acres, which we're adding to our project.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We are getting zero density benefit for adding this five units to, this five acres to our project. We are allowed to put these 13 units elsewhere on the Willow Bend project.
Right.
And, but, by using them here, we add five acres to the total project size. So it goes from 440 to 445, I'm not sure.
Do you have another area in the Willow Bend that has, that has this density?
May I be recognized?
Uh, do we have, I, I think this is very similar to the density along the heights. Those are all, you know, roughly 15,000, 18,000-foot parcels. And there's 100 in that neighborhood, so. But my point was, you know, we added five acres to the project, and we did not increase the, the density at all. And, you know, to, to, to the question in terms of viability, we are extending a sewer line, which is several hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We are doing a quarter million dollars worth of bog restoration. And, you know, these are proposals that we brought to the table, you know, recognizing that we're, this was a, a big ask, and that we had to bring in a significant amount of public benefit for the town. And we think, we think we've done that. If we lose four units, you know, the economics change pretty dramatically.
So if you, if you put these 14 units inside your original project, would your sewer line costs go down?
Yes.
I, I don't know where your sewer is on. So, so, I think this Troy, he wants to say something?
Yes, that's correct.
Hi, hi Troy, go ahead.
Hi, yes ma'am, thank you very much. I am the chief development officer for Southworth and for Willow Bend. And first, I just would like to thank you all for this thorough review of this project. I really appreciate it. I think a lot of good points are being made by Mr. Eddy and, and our legal representation. And I, I just want to point out kind of the high level facts of this, and try to make sure that they're all heard and understood. This project, as it is perceived and conceived here, is indeed reducing the overall density of the bounds of Willow Bend. We are incorporating more land that would otherwise be developed, and incorporating it into the base zoning density that we have. That is one of the positive impacts that I see of this project. The other is the overwhelming public benefit of the mitigation and of the, the, the things that are being done around this project.
Yeah, those two points are covered already. Do you have something that hasn't been covered? Because actually, Cameron Faulkner has the floor. Those two points have been covered.
My, my request of this board would be to, to please provide us with full feedback that if there's any other concerns over this plan versus the alternative plan that would have increased negative impacts on the environment and decreased positive benefits on the town.
Okay.
Please let us hear those tonight so that we can address them for your May 3 meeting.
Absolutely, go ahead, Karen, do you have any?
I really don't have any more, I understand the, the concept that if we have three single-family houses on here, we're gonna have, we're not gonna have the sewer, or we're not gonna have the plant. Why is that?
That, that's, an example. That's speculation, I don't want to like.
Speculation, a lot of.
We'll get out of it, I mean, that's one of their, that's one of their arguments that they're proposing to the board, is that this land could be developed in a way that would be, have higher environmental than that.
I, I get it, it, it sounds like a great plan. I just, I guess it's just about the proximity of these two houses. The, I don't, I don't know, maybe I just can't envision it, but this road, it just seems, I, I.
Thin.
I've said this to Evan, and, and I know you don't agree with me, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but I could just see cars being parked since we have to, people have to go park by the clubhouse there and, and come over, because there's no place to park, and you say they won't be parking on the roads. You know, you got one house here, one house here, they'll be parking on both sides of the street, you know, when they have company.
I, I brought that up when they first.
People aren't gonna want to go park over at the club and.
Yeah, but I brought that up when they first came with this, saying there's gonna be parking on the street. And if a fire truck comes down, how's it get by? And that's when you said, we have parking across the street, and that ain't gonna work, you know, because.
People will always take the path of least resistance and then pull right up to the house.
If I could on that point, the, you know, when I think what we had talked about was if you're having, you know, a large gathering at your house, and you know that you're gonna have a lot of vehicles, that's where you would then, you know, reach out to the club, and you'd, they could do golf carts or shuttle, and you could park across the street. For normal circumstances, the zoning requires two parking spaces per unit. We're providing two parking spaces per unit. You then, on top of that, the shoulder areas do, do provide additional parking along the shoulders, not in the roadway, along the shoulder edges. Those aren't, you're not gonna be, I mean, you know, who, who knows, you know, day to day, but I mean, it's unlikely that you're gonna see cars lined down the shoulders on both sides all the time. And if you go through, drive around any of the roads in Mashpee, or most towns on the Cape, you have road sections that are 18, maybe 20 feet, have no shoulders, that have houses down each side. When those cars are parked, where are they parked? They're parked in the, in the travelway. You're actually, with the shoulders here, you have more open travelway than you're gonna have on a road that's 18 or 20 feet wide, that doesn't have a shoulder, right? You, you've, oh, you come across it all the time, you park, somebody's parked, they have their two tires just off the road, three quarters of the car is in the road. And what do you do when you're going around them? You're, you're, you're going around them, and they're, the amount of space that's left is less than that you would actually have here.
Typical car is like, how many feet wide?
Six feet wide.
How many?
Six, six, yeah.
So you got seven and seven on either side, 18 in the middle, right?
Correct, yeah.
So.
So you could have.
The seven-foot, if they parked in the, what do you call it, the side?
The shoulder, yeah.
The shoulder.
I thought you weren't gonna allow them to park there.
We, we didn't say that, you're not, when it's not, not allowed, but it's, but that's not the, it's not intended for that. It's not a, it's not there as a parking lot, but it's providing, it's providing more area, as I just kind of described, just think about roads that you deal with all the time. I mean, you, you have, you must run into it every day that you drive around when, you know, somebody's parked on the side of a road. I mean, this is actually provides more space.
So come up and look at the plan. Karen, I think you need to look at the plan, right? Just to, just to note, when he's talking, it's this dashed line.
Correct.
Yes, I, I understand. This is seven feet, 18 feet, seven feet.
Okay, alright, go.
So, if the car is only four feet wide, it's in this seven-inch, uh, six feet, what you said. So there's, you know, it's parked right on the end there, there's a foot on, spare, to spare, but people don't park.
And why is that, that shoulder made up?
It's gonna be seashell, but it's gonna be H20 surface for, you know, which is.
Hold it.
Because.
We put that in that.
It's in, it's in the plan, there's a detail, there's details in the plan.
Put that in the, correct.
You're not just throwing it on the ground.
Right, yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so we don't have Michael? Okay, so, I've been doing a little studying about open meeting law and public records. So, anything you have in front of you is a public record. So, I just want to let everybody know what I have in front of me. It was a comment in the past about by a board member. How did Mary get all these materials? Oh, I'll let you know. And, and Chrissy, I think there's something on your desk that has this list. So the public documents that the chair is using is the application, including all the plans as amended. Correspondence from board engineer Ed Pesci that's dated 2/27/23. Special permits for the project dated, special permit for the project dated 1978 as amended, with all the plans, well, most of the plans. Lists and dates of said permit and subsequent modification with notes, I have a list of that. Correspondence from Tom Fadala, Erin Copeland, and Mary, uh, sorry, Michael and Terry Ronhock. I have the planning board meeting minutes of March 1st, 2023. Notes from the site visit by planning board members, I believe that, was that on March 8th?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that was on March 8th. The Towne Yarmouth Rules and Regulations Governing Subdivision of Land dated 2017. Towne of Mashpee Special Permit Regulations dated 2017. Mass General Law Chapter 48. The Mashpee Zoning Bylaw of 1985, and the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw of 2020. So in, so this special permit uses the, this modification uses the 1985 zoning bylaw. Section 7, 7.3 says, "If one or more building may lawfully be placed on any one lot in a single or common ownership, the distance between the nearest parts of the buildings shall not be less than 20 feet." That's where the 20 feet comes.
That was modified by this board, I'll have to get you the, the reference, but.
Okay, it's in several of the amendments. It's conditioned, the project is conditioned 20 feet between buildings.
Right, and that was, that was modified, but.
But it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. I'm going with the fact that it is required. It's, if you want to use the special permit modification process that you're, where you're, you're annexing land, you have to use that zoning. You have to use that zoning, and you have to comply with the, with the special permit and the conditions that are in there. And there are conditions that state you have to have 20 feet between buildings. So I just want to let you know it's in the bylaw, and I'll be looking for that on the plans.
Right, that's because it's new land being added to the project?
Yes, if you read, if, yes. They have to, they get the benefit of using the 1985 bylaw, but they have to comply with it. And they have to comply with the other conditions that are in the special permit as amended. That's the deal. Or you have to, or you have to subdivide it, you know, you can do ANRs or do a cluster subdivision. That's the deal, that's the deal that I'm putting forward to you as a member of a special permit granting authority. People are not happy that this is using zoning from 1985. Things change in zoning because things change here. We're in a water crisis.
Right, and I, I would think that having three homes on septic systems would be less preferable than.
But we're not causing, we're not causing that burden on you, okay?
No, but you're exercising your judgment as to what's in the best interest of the town and addressing the water quality problem. So, I'm just trying to point out the balance.
Right, that five acres, half of it would be open space. If you did, if, if you went to develop that, that would have to be 50% open space. You know, cluster subdivision.
No, 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 so it would be three.
Three ANRs.
No, you could do three ANRs.
We did, we did that, we showed you.
Right.
That's allowed as a right, subject to wetland permitting.
Yep, but, and, and the whole thing is in a wetlands jurisdiction, so, you know, anyway. So anyways, so, I have some questions for you. The Cape Cod Commission decision that you gave us, I only received five pages out of 40 of the document. In the, in the package is only the first five pages.
It, it has a recording information on it, but if you need me to get you the.
Right, but the, the piece of the decision isn't there. I asked for the decision with, with the, with the conditions, okay? And that's okay, okay? Just let me ask you this question, because you're gonna be able to answer this. Has Willow Bend Southworth complied fully with any and all Cape Cod Commission decisions made on the original project as amended and expanded?
Yes, as, as far, as far as I know.
That's all I wanted to know.
We have certificates of compliance that were issued way back when.
Yeah, it just, I asked that question, I didn't get the answer with the materials, I just have to ask it again, okay? Okay, I found the, the ANR, okay. I asked you for the total number of existing bedrooms in the project. For the whole, okay?
I don't know.
Is the maximum?
We, we gave you the, we gave you all the printout from the, from the assessors.
So I'm gonna have to go and look up each, okay.
I, I, we, we don't necessarily have that either.
Okay, because your special permit, your maximum bedroom's allowed at 853, 853.
That's been modified, yeah.
I can't find that modification. I can't find that modification.
Okay.
Okay, you think that's been modified, so.
I mean, that was driven by the capacity of the storage treatment plan, uh, which DEP has.
I just don't wanna cause you a conflict, you know what I mean? If we add these fourteen units, they're three bedrooms each, right?
Right.
And you go over that limit, I don't wanna cause you a conflict, right? I wanna resolve all of those.
Okay.
Okay, so I need to know what, how many bedrooms you have and how many you're adding.
These are, these are three bedroom, these are designed as three bedroom units. We've said that in the.
Can they be expanded to four?
Uh, that would be restricted in the condominium documents. That's the expectation.
You have an advertisement that says that it can be.
I haven't, I haven't seen that, I'm not aware of it, but they're designed as three. Uh, they've been submitted to DEP as three.
Might not matter, right? It might not matter. I just, I don't, I want, I don't wanna prove something that contradicts something that was. Cuz I have read all your special things. I also need you to calculate the amount of lawn that is gonna happen on this lot. There's a restriction that you can't have over thirty-five percent of the lot area as lawn. I think that thirty-five percent is a high number, I don't think you're gonna be anywhere near it.
Yeah, we did, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but we did calculations for that, for a nitrogen load calculation for the conservation filing and it's, you have a lot, the lawn areas were, are very low overall.
They're low.
Like one point six parts per million nitrogen for this total project, so.
Right, you could just put that on the note, on note somewhere so we can be in compliance with that, with that condition. So there is, there is a condition in one of the special permit modifications that require bio retention and stormwater management plans in accordance with the current special permit regulations. So I'm looking to Ed, did you look at that with respect to our special permit regs?
I did, um, I looked at your zoning bylaw and special permit granting authority regulations regarding that and the current stormwater design does comply with that. And in further, it's, it's probably one of the most innovative ways I've seen this done. You're kinda using, by converting a cranberry bog to a constructed wetland, essentially a, a stormwater management system, you're basically using the wetland resource area, part of the wetland resource area, uh, as part of the, and I'm not saying this in a negative way, uh, as part of the stormwater management system. So it's, it's different from what I've run into in the past. But again, it was their obligation to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, make sure those comments were addressed. One of my original comments was, they gotta file that notice of intent, which they did, they have.
Oh, that was that meeting?
It's underway now.
It was a notice of intent, okay.
Notice of intent for Conservation Commission, so they have to get a wetland permit. And part of that, they have to, they have to comply with DEP stormwater management regulations and which they are doing. And um, you know, there's a rather extensive stormwater calculation package that I I reviewed. But one of the conditions I recommended was if you get told to do something different by the Concom and that changes your plans, subject to the board's review and approval of this job, that, this project, that they would have to submit those revisions to us, to the planning board for, you know, for modification, whatever minor modification it might be. But that.
All right, so that, that should be a, that's a possible condition, right?
Yeah, yes, it was one of my original comments, they had no problem with that, they're planning to provide final, final versions of those plans. Because they may ask you to change something, you know, before the, before this is over. I, I'm not sure what that would be yet, but you know, I think they've gone through enough review with this board and others that I think that they've got a pretty robust stormwater management system.
They've only done a notice of intent, though, they haven't, what do you mean, review? Oh, you mean your review, okay.
No, they, they, they've done, they still have to go through their review. Our, our review was, was done, sure, by me and others, but yes, they still have to go through review by the, by the Concom.
It's like a formal, what, what do you, I forget.
Yeah, we filed a notice of intent form to Conservation, so we go through the Conservation Commission hearings, the states involved in that process as well.
We've probably met with the Conservation Commission four times at least so far to discuss.
Yeah, they get, what's called an order of conditions, that's the wetland permit.
Not, okay.
Order of conditions.
Yeah, cuz one of um, one of our requirements is that if you go before other boards, you give us the minutes. So um, I thought you, I thought you went to Concom only once.
We haven't been to them formally yet, we've just filed the notice of intent. Um, we've met with them informally in November. It was an informal meeting, so I don't know if there's minutes that are kept off of that.
Oh, any, any public board, there is.
So.
Bear with me. Okay, so Cameron brought up, I had that same concern, is this the final build out? So that, I have that on a list of possible conditions. I talked about the, the crosswalk, so in one of your older modifications, it says that Willoughby is gonna be maintaining the crosswalk. Now, I know that, that the town is doing the work. I, is the town gonna maintain that or is that gonna be?
No, the letter that we provided to you states that, Willoughby, the letter that we provided from Mr. Jack at the town states that the town is installing the light and, but the maintenance going forward is on Willoughby's dime.
It's in this, their submission.
Yeah.
Not exactly sure which document, but yes.
It was an email which I forwarded back in February.
Was it submitted with your packet?
I don't think that's.
No, it was, it was earlier than that, it's, it was just an email from Mr. Jack. It's a memorandum of understanding. The town approached Willoughby and.
Right.
Asked us if we would donate with, without cost, a quarter acre of our land so that the town could put its pump station there. We agreed and as a good faith gesture, the town agreed to, while it had its crew out there to do some work. So we generally try to cooperate and help the town and we did that. And uh, so they have agreed to put in the crossing light and we will maintain that going forward.
Can you resend that correspondence, cuz it never made it to me.
I didn't send it to you, I, I, I will resend it.
I don't know where, when.
Again.
I don't, I don't know where, it's not in my packet, it never, I don't think it got forwarded to me.
I don't recall seeing it, you may have sent it to me and I may have missed it.
It's not a big deal, I'm happy to resend it.
It's, yeah, like, just, you know, cuz I just wanna make sure that if there's anything that we have to modify from the past, let's do it, let's do it. I don't wanna read these things again, okay? Okay, um, line of sight, so you know, um, we do have public comment, um, I'll, I'll read it later on, it's from Erin Copeland. She talks about the trickiness of getting by this area. And I think that this is, you know, what you're proposing, I think, is an improvement over the driveway that's there, right? Talk about like line of sight and how, you know, traffic calming methods so that, you know, when people come in and out, delivery trucks go in and out of there, the people who ride by there every day aren't put at risk.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you look in sheet three point three, that's the site distance plan.
Oh, good, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so if you wanna put that on the screen, that would be, or look at the package there. But with the new entrance location, with the entrance being wider, obviously not a driveway like it is now, with the turning radii that exist for vehicles exiting out, that allows you, a vehicle to have better site distance and have a little bit of speed as they enter the Quinnequisset Ave. Um, and then as far as site distance to the left and right, we, you see on that plan, there's those shaded areas, that's your line of sight distance. And those are, exceed what's referred to as the ASHTO requirements for safe stopping site distance. So this, it's definitely an improvement over that existing driveway area. Again, the wider road, the radii that it provided, and then the site distance lines that are provided will give you the necessary site distance for you, when you're exiting out to look both ways and make sure that you have this, you know, safe stopping site distance to make any maneuver that you're gonna do.
Could you tell us, what is the distance on that side and that side? Let's say you're coming up Quinnequisset.
See where the green truck is, Karen?
Yeah.
From that point to the, to the, the green car in the entrance driveway?
Yeah.
That's the site distance.
And what, what, just read them off for us.
It's labeled on the plan, I'm trying to read my small one here.
Oh, you have a small plan that you can't read?
Well, hey, I can tell you it's about two hundred and eighty feet, Mary, that, come on.
Two eighty?
Is it two eighty?
Eighty-two, maybe?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I don't know.
No, it's two, it's two fifty and two fifty.
There you go.
Two hundred, so when you're the green truck, right? You can see two hundred and fifty feet to the right and two hundred and fifty feet to the left.
Will when they clear the area, not currently clear.
You can't now.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
That was one of my comments when I went to the site visit, but he had already put that, I didn't even put it, one of my comments is already part of the design.
They know what we want. Okay, so now you have trucks entering and exiting through other, you know, areas on Quinnequisset Avenue. How do you control the Amazon delivery truck that this woman almost got hit by? Like, do you guys put little signs up? Do you talk to, you know, vendors when they're not behaving well? I mean, what, what is?
I mean, internally on the main, uh, drive, Willoughby Drive, we have stop signs, you know, where golf cart paths go across. We have speed bumps on that main drag just to slow people down. You've got flashing yellow lights at, at the crossings. You know, that, that, there were gates, as you know, at a couple different places so that at least forces people to come to a real stop before they pull out. But, you know, that, that's it.
Okay, so will there be a stop sign at this exit?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. So they have to stop?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I think that might, I will look at Erin Copeland's comments, but that might.
Might do it.
That might serve the purpose, thank you. Okay, so it's my understanding in order for you to, to use this process to expand and amend the special permit, the proposed expansion must comply with the rule which apply to all properties in the permit and the nineteen eighty-five bylaw. So I'm seeing that, right, we already talked about the bedrooms, the lawn. So you have, there's a condition that the maximum bedrooms of the whole project is, is eight hundred and fifty-three. I think you're there, you know what I mean? If you just do a back of the envelope calculation, I think you're there, but I wanna make sure that the lawns have to be less total, less than thirty-five percent of the lot. I think you're there. I am looking for that hundred-foot buffer from Quinnequisset Avenue, left in its existing vegetated state, and that's from the original permit from nineteen seventy-eight. I know it's gonna.
Just to be.
I know it's gonna radically change your, your, your plans. And if you wanna come back with conceptual plans, cuz I know, you know, the engineering is pretty intense on this, but I'll tell you, I'm not gonna support it without the hundred, hundred-foot buffer.
Would you support something in, you know, in between where we're at and toward, like seventy-five feet?
My overall observations is that there's too much jammed into this area, so not at this time. It's too.
So you would not support, I mean, I, that, that's important for us to, to hear if we could poll the board on that. You know, would you support something less than a hundred, but in excess of what we've provided?
I'm still going, so you might have to bring back a conceptual plan. And I'm, I'm running this meeting, okay? So you might have to bring back a conceptual plan before we can do a straw.
Could I ask?
No, no, let me finish.
Right, well, let's be, let's be clear, you, it is a board decision.
So, thank you, sir, I'm, I have the floor. Um, I know it's John, but I have the floor. And I believe, I, I am very patient and I listen to everybody and I know that people don't like to take my comments, I, I get it, but that's my job.
Yeah, but it's five men, five board members, and you're not asking me.
But I, you had your, you had your chance.
Yeah, but you come up with something new, with the hundred foot.
The hundred, the hundred feet is what's required.
Yeah, but we can, we can, we can adjust that.
Yep.
I mean, I don't agree with that, I mean.
No, I think, I think it's.
No, but you're kind of, you're not giving the board enough time, even to.
I, I let you guys all speak first.
Yeah, but then you started with all these new things and you're not giving me time to, to agree or disagree.
Can I, can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, cuz I, I try to listen to everybody from the beginning to the end.
Yeah, but then you push your agenda and say that's the agenda and that's it.
I'm sorry, Dennis, I don't mean to do that.
Well, that's what you're doing.
I, I, I have correspondence that's saying that it's required, the hundred, the hundred-foot vegetated buffer is required. My overall observation is that there's too much at the site and I haven't even finished, you know? The twenty-foot is a minimum, separation between the buildings is required as well. And the, the, we already addressed the bio retention and stormwater management that's in accordance with our special permit regs.
Mary, I didn't hear that you kinda.
That the, the twenty-foot separation between the buildings and that the bio retention and stormwater management has to be in accordance to special permit regulations. We already, we got that answer, so that's good. We talked about the entranceway. I, I think that the road, you, like, again, you've got just too much stuff jammed in here. I think the road is too narrow, it's gonna cause congestion and parking problems. People are gonna cheat. I looked at what's required in our rules and regulations and the lowest we go is twenty feet, twenty-foot road, and I think that's what we should get. I'm not happy the way that you have the fire truck turning around inside the driveway system. I've looked at other plans where you've had the T turnaround, it is completely separate from other driveways. Of course, we like the circle, that's gonna probably take up too much of your, your space. But I, I want, I want the T to be clear, it's standalone, not in the driveway system.
Didn't the fire chief approve?
Thank you, sir, yes, sir, yes, and I already addressed that, that it's, this board's primary job is safety and access. Um, and I think people are going to park there and cheat in parking. Regarding protecting the health and benefit, the health and safety of the town, you are upstream of a very fragile environmental area that's a mapped natural resource. I don't have the exact name, but my overall observation, again, is that you've got too much jammed in. I know that you have a mitigation plan. I don't understand why somebody's past action to destroy a river gives you the right to, to fix it and call it mitigation and equate it with dense development. I just don't understand that, that's how it works, but I don't support it. Eight of the fourteen units are in the two-hundred-foot riparian zone of the Quaker Run River. Five of the fourteen units are actually in a wetland. Ten of the fourteen units are within fifty feet of the wetland. And all units are within the hundred-foot jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It, it's just an enormous ask while we are in a water crisis. People are gonna look at this and say, oh, the planning board approved it. I go to other board meetings, oh, the planning board approved it. It's okay to build in the wetland, it's okay, just keep doing it. If you think that these bogs are polluting downstream, you should fix them. They're in your control, right? They're in your control.
That would apply to everyone with a septic system.
I think that's where the town's going, okay? The town is going, I'm gonna have to pay to fix that, okay? I'm paying for the sewer-ing in town. It's not a hundred percent the homeowner that's getting sewed. Seventy percent is being shared townwide, so I am paying that.
And Willoughby pays three point one million dollars a year.
No, I, I know, but I, I think you're just jamming way too much in here for me to approve. I haven't looked at the lighting plan and the landscaping plan, but um, those, those are my comments at this time.
Can we ask for a couple points of clarification?
Yes.
Okay. The first is on the hundred-foot buffer, I think we have a difference of opinion as to whether that's a legal requirement. I'm happy to provide the precedence what has been weighed before, but I would like to get. But I would like to get a straw poll from the other board members as to whether they would entertain something, uh, less than 100. Uh, but, in addition to what we have here, because I can tell you, at 100 feet, th- this project simply does not work. And if, if, if that's your view, that that's the legal requirement, and everyone shares that view.
But you're, you're, you're making, well, anyway. Anyway, so, right, at this point, what I usually, yeah, but you're not the chair, so what, um, I mean, uh, do you wanna deliberate before we have public comment? And before, we, we usually go to the town planner, the town engineer, and then public comment. I mean, that's usually what we do.
Let's just follow that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, because what happens is we fight and we get distracted, and then people don't get to public comment, so. Um, Evan, I usually turn to you next, do you wanna go?
At this point, I'm not really sure what to say.
Okay, then we can go to Ed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would like to see some of the precedents, uh, that Mary is asserting here, because I see the substantial benefit of the mitigation package, and I don't think the board should, should remove evaluation of the total package pri- without thoughtfully and deeply considering that benefit. In addition to the stormwater capture off of Quinnequisset. To me, all of the issues you've raised appear relatively de minimis and, and able to be resolved. I would hate to lose the benefit that the town could potentially receive here, as part of the mitigation package. So I'd ask the board members to be thoughtful about that.
Ed, I usually turn to Ed.
Oh, God.
Yeah, and then I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna, this correspondence, we have to acknowledge, and then I have to open it up to the public. Go ahead, Ed.
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, uh, for the record, Ed Pesci, Pesci Engineering Consulting Engineer to the Planning Board. I just wanna state for the record that, uh, Mr. Eddie did properly, in my opinion, represent the discussions that we've had back and forth, the reviews, the changes. Uh, we had, uh, we took advantage of the time that the board was deliberating on the zoning articles, to go in the back in the, uh, in the hallway, and went over a couple of remaining things that I had, still had on my plate, um, to discuss with Matt. I think, uh, if you simply conditioned, should the board decide to move forward with, with this project and approve it, you just conditioned that, um, final resolution of all Pesci Engineering comments will be required. And I can provide a letter when that happens, I can provide a letter under the record, and it'll be taken care of. But I think Matt's correct, it was, uh, they're fairly minor in nature, there's some, uh, uh, one or two things that, that he and I will work on directly, and I have no issue seeing that, you know, seeing that through. Just listening to the list of questions, uh, Madam Chair, that you've brought up, of course. Uh, I think, uh, it's a good idea, I think if you ask their, their, their legal counsel to provide you, um, you know, other precedent on the setback between buildings, the buffer from Quinnequisset, so that the board has that information to deliberate with. It sounds to me like, I've heard two, two or three related comments from these three board members, you three board members right now, that you're not 100% happy with the density, and that they should maybe go back and, that's a good comment for them to think about and go back to. So, I, I think that's all I'll have to say about it right now.
I think if they accept my comments, the density will go down, so. Okay, so is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Oh, go ahead, thank you.
It's really more of a question, this is Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive.
Oh, my God.
You've talked.
What did you say, John? Go ahead.
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. Uh, it's more of a question, you talk about bog restoration, and I, I don't know what that entails and what that means. So I'm wondering if you have a, an, a whole plan for that? Or what it would take to actually do what you're talking about in terms of bog restoration? Thank you.
Yeah, there, there will be formal plans, uh, going through the Conservation Commission, uh, process for the actual detailed reconstruction of the, taking the active bogs offline and restoring them to a natural wetland system. And what it generally entails, um, is this removal of material from the bog system. That over the years, uh, bog farmers add sand to the bogs, they actually, bogs are mowed every year, or, yeah, I think every year. So there's, you know, there's no natural vegetation. So you go in, you remove, uh, the sand, it's regraded, we restore the natural, for this, these systems here, what we call Bog 1 and 2, which are along Quaker Run. It'll restore Quaker Run to a meandering channel, right, whereas right now it's a fairly straight channel, because for bogs, right, they create the channels for getting the water into the, and dispersing it through the bogs. You create microtopography of high and low system, so it, it allows a natural wetland system, uh, to, uh, restore itself and to, um, and to thrive. And, you know, the, the major benefit of, you know, not just, you know, it's the restoration to the natural system, which, you know, provides its wildlife habitat, its vegetation habitat. But, you know, the, the big part of the public benefit is because of the water quality and the nitrogen aspect, these, this is an agricultural use, and I know you mentioned that, uh, Willow Bend controls it, it's still, it's an, it's an allowed agricultural use, as is any of these cranberry bogs. And that the farmer has the right to farm that, and as a agricultural use, they're exempt from a lot of requirements. And so, you know, you have the, the fertilizers, et cetera, uh, being used there, and that's what can potentially be eliminated, um.
That farmer, how does he, how does he have access to that? Is that, uh, he owns it?
It's a lease, he's leased to the bog farmer.
And it's from?
Willow Bend.
Willow Bend, and it's a voluntary lease? It's not required, you could end it at any time?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we can't end it at any time, it's, it's under lease, that lease is in place until it expires, I'm not sure when that is, but.
I'm sorry, I have to text my daughter.
So hopefully that answered the question generally. But yes, it will be a, you know, detailed plans, and again, that's going, that'll be going through the Conservation Commission review process.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so, um, we got comments from, a written comment, and I think there's three in total.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Erin Copeland submitted two, but she reiterated the same comment. So you have her original letter, isn't that packet? With her same photo, same, they say the same content.
So, this one came in, in March 29th, 2020, doesn't it?
She sent the same letter again today.
Okay, so, um, Erin Copeland, um, says, it's, it's to Evan, I, um, okay. She says, I live off of Quinnequisset at Bay Cove, uh, Cootit Bay Condos. And as you know, River View Ave is our only egress, our only eaters, empties onto a straightaway portion of Quinnequisset Avenue, right after the bend in the road at Chestnut. I've been driving this road since my long-ago days as a cook at Willow Bend, traveling to the kettle ho after work. It's a stretch of road where folks pick up speed, honking freely at anyone trying to leave the condo. Simply hoping not to get into an accident, my sister-in-law refuses to take a left out of the driveway, it's gotten so bad, my fears for this condo project, I think, um, I mean, you guys, not, not Cootit. Is increased traffic that 14 more homes will bring to an already busy road. The driveway at 275 is also at the end of the road, albeit less sharp, but it's there. The other morning, returning from dropping my son at school, I usually follow another mom who turns at Willow Bend Drive. I was, I almost broadsided an Amazon delivery truck as he was pulling out of 275 Quinnequisset. He thought it was clear, it wasn't. He could have, we could have had a very bad accident, is there a plan for managing the traffic? And/or visibility issues since the development will be adding to it, I understand these permits have been in place for years, and they are simply exercising their right to use permits. However, in the interim between when these permits were issued and now, surely road conditions are different, and it must be necessary due to population, increased development, et cetera. So I think you've addressed that.
I believe so, yeah, and she was talking about a vehicle coming out of the driveway at 275?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not the same condition.
So it's gonna be wider? It's gonna be paved, it's gonna have a stop sign?
Yeah, and, and significantly better site distance.
And is the stop sign on there?
Yeah, yeah, it's on 3.0.
Thank you. Uh, another concern is runoff and already poor drainage conditions that exist at the site and in the street.
It's gonna be six.
Right. During the storm on, uh, March 11th, I drove by the a- address and it took some photos and show what I'm talking about. As you can see, hopefully see in the distance, is the mailbox at 275. In front of the po- uh, pond forming, ooh, and front of it is the pond forming. There's also video that follows the water runoff from an area at the main entrance and across, um, the street down to 275. I think she's talking that it actually comes across? That's not possible, is it?
Talking about what?
Water coming across from, crossing this Quinnequisset Avenue from your main entrance? That's not possible, is it?
No, not, yeah, I mean, not from the main entrance, I don't think, but I, the runoff on Quinnequisset, it comes, you know, that the low spot is, you know, kinda in this area here, right on Quinnequisset. And if, you can actually see that, you know, the runoff is coming down the road.
Okay.
And then it sheet flows across the road, into that shoulder, right into that well, and you can see it on the shoulder.
Okay, it's the area of the main entrance, it's not coming from the main entrance, okay. My concern or question is, how will this already existing problem be affected by the proposed project?
And it will be made better.
Do you, do you have that sheet? There's a sheet that shows what you're gonna do to fix that problem?
Yeah, I mean, the grading plan, you know, uh, 4.0, 4.1.
Can you show it?
That has the, uh, grading, the stormwater management, we actually are providing some additional, um, Cape Cod berm, which is just that slate asphalt rolled berm along the edge of Quinnequisset Ave, per the request of the Director of DPW. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely gonna improve the situation. If you go probably to 4.0, Evan, to be able to see, uh, Quinnequisset. Yeah, there you go. So the, there's gonna be a Cape Cod berm, uh, let me, I'll point over here. It's gonna be a Cape Cod berm, although Karen, I know that's hard for you to see as well, so I'll try to do it on both. But there's a Cape Cod berm being added along this edge, which is, we had talked about at the last hearing, which will help channel the water along the edge, gets it off the shoulder, stops erosion. That was at the request of, uh, Catherine Laurent, the Director of DPW. Um, and then the, the sheet flow area existing right now comes off the road, and I'm having a hard time seeing it at this angle, but there's a, the little point of the wetland system that literally comes like right up to the shoulder. And you can see it on the shoulder of the road, where there's just a lot of sediment there, it's a very soft shoulder. And it's just all the, you know, the, over the years, it's just, you know, the water has sat there, and sediments accumulated and so forth. That's all gonna get cleaned up, regraded, and then that'll get diverted through to this Forbay area, which is now lower than the shoulder area. And that provides the additional stormwater, or, well, I shouldn't say additional, it provides treatment where there is no treatment. So it's taking care of that.
It seemed like when we walked out of, out of, I thought we made a left, and there was all that mud and water dried up, wasn't?
From the driveway?
Yeah, never we weren't.
Am I wrong?
It was along the, the road frontage, we were walking, so where that ancient way kinda comes out, that public way, where the golf maze, we walk, I guess, westerly along Quinnequisset Avenue, and it was quite muddy. That's where the stormwater collects, where the sheet flows across Quinnequisset Ave, the low one.
So this picture here from Erin.
Is likely where we were walking there.
Yeah. It was clear there was a lot of water there at one point.
So Ed, have you seen those pictures?
Nope.
Oh.
But I, I completely understand what she's talking about.
Okay.
I'm following everything you guys are saying.
Yeah.
Following everything you guys are saying, and, and I, um, certainly believe that what they're proposing will enhance this. They're changing where the entrance is now. So, um, I, Matt, I think this is where, this is close where the entrance is gonna go. So this is across the street, right? So this is, this is the 275 side of the street. And I think the entrance is, is close to here.
Uh, actually, I was thinking that that was down to the west.
This, this looks like, as you.
Of the existing driveway.
Am I correct in assuming, looking at this photo for the first time, as you exit the driveway, it's to the left?
That's what I remember.
Okay. So I think it's in that vicinity anyway, sort of looks like. But the way they're, they're planning to build, rebuild that entrance, um, you know, this collection of stormwater at their driveway. Um, I, I, you know, to, to, to be very, very careful about this, I'd have to go out and look at it.
But if that, if that is to the left of the existing driveway, it's absolutely, there's, that's getting all reconstructed, that's all the.
It's all gonna be different.
You know, right, Cape Cod berm, that's gonna go away. I, and it's hard to tell from that picture, but I thought it was more down in that low, remember the low spot? And I think I pointed out to you all.
Yes.
With the shoulder, where it was just very soft, and you could see, and that's where the water was sheet flowing, and there was the, the flag was right there, where you could see the, the wetland off of the shoulder, so.
That's what I was describing, I was assuming the photos were that location, not to the left of the.
Yeah, that's what I, it's hard to tell from that, from what's the perspective, but either way, it's gonna, I mean, if it's to the left, it's gonna, it's gonna.
It is to the left, 'cause it's guardrail shown on your existing conditions plan, and that's what I'm seeing over here.
You're seeing guardrail on that, so.
Either way, you have to fix it.
That'll be, that'll be fixed, yeah. And the other piece too, was, it's, well, I don't know.
I remember, Matt, 'cause when I got home, there was mud on my shoes.
Do you have that correspondence?
With that photo? No.
Do you wanna, um, grab it from the packet?
I'll give it to you.
Yeah, yeah, you can just email it to me, thanks.
Can we do it now? Yeah, that's, um.
I can, I can give him mine. I, I know, I remember it.
Yeah, that's.
No, it's not necessary.
'Cause I don't wanna give you mine, usually, I, I'm not cheap. Did, did you get, did you get the Ron Hawks' correspondence?
Oh, the Ron Hawk is here too.
Yeah.
I'll take that off.
Okay, so, um, anyway, all right, so that's, that's written correspondence number one, thank you, Erin. We're on the pathway to resolve both of those concerns. Um, the next letter is, uh, to the Mashpee Town Planning Board from Michael and Terry Ronhawk, 104 DeGrasse Road, uh, regarding Willow Bend, this project is a glaring example of what is wrong when developers try to max out their profits, over, overdeveloping the areas available space. A scaled-back version of this development would allow for maintaining the buffer proper driveway size and access road size. These are the points we would like to make regarding this proposal. One is taxpayers, we are, we have concerns about liability to the town of Mashpee if approval or sanction, sanction, sanctioning is given in any way to the operation of golf cart, cart driving along or across a public road. Transversing a crosswalk with this type of motor vehicle is not legal, Mass. General Law 90-9. Operating a golf cost, court, golf cart across or on a roadway is not legal without registration of liability insurance or a bond, Mass. General Law 90.9. The 100-foot road frontage buffer should be enforced and maintained. The buffer should remain undisturbed and natural without a golf cart roadway. High-density development such as this should not be allowed without affordable housing contribution. Common driveways between units are conducive to cars being parked in the main roadway, which is already too narrow. Fertilizer-laced runoff from the golf amenity will be collected but not treated before leaching into the aquifer. Don't know if you wanna address any of those, if you, do you have it in front of you?
I don't.
Here.
But.
We do have it, um.
Do you want, do you want this?
I, I'm sure, I mean, I.
I mean, in terms of the golf cart crossings, I, it's, I, I'm not familiar with the rule that applying, but I can tell you, Quashtet Valley, New Seaberry, Willow Bend have all had them for 30-plus years, so. Uh, and we do have insurance, obviously. Uh, the other point, uh, in terms of the buffer, I think we've, we've discussed that, uh, quite a bit in the, uh, the drainage issue. So, uh, we've heard those comments.
You've put, you've put forth, um, an argument about the affordable housing contribution, do you wanna? Do you want to say that at this time? It's in your explanation.
Yeah, I would simply point out that, you know, we have had a private solution to that. Basically, we own about 40 units of, of off-site housing, which is used for employees. We, we have over 100, I think, and 20 employees during the high point of the season. We have a boarding house in Hyannis, which we have several other houses in and around Mashpee that we use. And then most significantly, last year, I think, as the board is aware, we, we acquired the Santuit Inn and is now being used for employee housing. And, you know, we have had discussions with the selectmen, this board, and others would be anxious to partner in other longer-term solutions on employee housing because as, as one of the bigger employers in Mashpee, it's critical to our future too.
And when you house your workforce, they're not looking for other units?
Correct.
Right, that was your argument.
That relieves stress on.
Relieves stress on the housing market. So that addresses some of their points. And then we have correspondents from Tom Fadala supporting the requirement for the 100-foot.
Yes.
Buffer.
Which we've discussed.
And I think, I think, I think that's it. I don't know if the, if the, the board at this time wants to have a discussion or just continue. What do you guys want to do? I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see some conceptual plans based on some of the things that we've commented on. But I don't know if you, what you guys.
I mean.
I like to see us go with that 100-foot buffers zone, maybe we can, maybe 40 feet buffers old or 50 feet.
It's 40.
And I think this project is benefit to the town because it's going to fix the Quaker Run River, help the pollution, it's all s- stored, so we're not going to get no nitrogen from it. The only thing I have a problem with, I think there's way too many houses in this lot, and that, that number seven. And ever since I've been on the board, I always ask the fire department if it's okay. And they're the, the professionals, so if they're saying it's okay, they can turn the truck around. I agree with that. We always took their letter as proof. We made sure. I always asked, do we have a letter? So I'm, I'm all set with the fire department. If he said that's all right, even when Jack was on the board, I used to ask him, what do you think, Jack? And he would say, you know, yeah, good. He had some problems with it. You already went to all that with the, they did the truck, turns around, I'm fine with that. Like I said, there's only one thing, I think there's way too many houses.
Okay.
Karen?
I don't know. I'm new, I'm new on the board. I'm just trying to learn this stuff. I, I really, when I left the last time, I felt so great about what you were doing in restoring, you know, the wetlands. Because, you know, that I understand because water's been my main issue. That's, was my main issue in the LCP. It's my main issue now. That's all I talk about is, we moved here for the water and we didn't know it was so contaminated, and it's very upsetting. You know, for older people, you know, you can't swim in the ponds if there's any immunocompromised situation. You know, I mean, this is, this is a water place, and to be deprived of that is really heartbreaking. I'd say more so than economic wonders here, you know, with the stores and everything. I never even thought about that. It was the water. So that I'm very taken with, and I'm very pro on that for you. I, you know, I just, maybe if you'd show us the modifications, maybe I'd rethink this. I, I don't know. I, I agree with him, I agree with Dennis, that that last place doesn't seem right to me. I mean, you might have trouble even selling that, but you're such a hot commodity, maybe you won't. One question I wanted to ask was, do you anticipate these people to be kind of seasonal people? You know, is that, is that your market, kind of seasonal? So.
Yeah, I wouldn't say we market, you know, necessarily for that, but that.
Is that what generally winds up happening?
I would expect that, you know, if I had to put a number on it, 30% of these people will be year-round, and, and the bulk would be, you know, seasonal, which gets longer every year, but it's, you know, April through November-ish. That, that's the mix today, basically.
You don't allow Airbnbs there, do you?
No.
Yep.
So. These are condos, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, may I ask?
One more. Hey, John, you still with us?
I am.
Yeah, did you want to say something at this point?
I have no issues with the plan. I think, you know, Dennis's comments were spot-on. If we could do something to increase the buffer, that, that would be great, but I'm not going to make it, I'm not going to make it an issue. I think this is, this is a benefit to the town, and you've done a nice job of addressing the issues that you've heard.
Okay. All right, Jack.
I, I guess I had, you know, one, one observation and one request. The, the observation is, to go back to where we started, you know, with the election coming up, it seems to be that if we don't get this thing across the finish line at the first meeting in May, that we have to start all over because the new member coming on will not be allowed to vote because they haven't had that, and we will obviously be losing John. So, you know, we have heard loud and clear that we need to make some changes here, but given the timeframe, we would appreciate as much direction as the board could give us on a couple of key points. So I, I will go back and ask, and I've heard from the chair, but is there, assuming, and I can, assuming I could provide.
I, I, I think you heard, they want to see concept, they want to see what it's going to look at, look like. And I, I.
Can I finish my comment or request through the board, through the chair? You know, it's very difficult to design in a vacuum, and the key question is, if the board, if, assuming I could provide the board, which I know I can, with evidence of the precedent with a 40, with a 100-foot has been waived in the past, is this board conceptually open to considering something more than 40 but less than 100? Because if it's 100, I can tell you right now, it's, it's not going to work. You know, we're going to lose.
Right, but I'm going to opine, that I hear that all the time, and people still go forward with things like that. I mean, people say, oh, it's not financially feasible to give you 60 more feet of buffer when you've given it before. You know, unless you give me a pro forma and a financial feasibility study showing that it's not financially feasible to give us a 100-foot buffer, you haven't even looked at multifamily housing, detached units, you know, you know.
I mean, I would point out.
You know, if you don't want to do it because you don't want to have a 100-foot buffer, then that's different than saying it's impossible.
Well.
Because I'm telling you, it's possible.
Isn't the question, isn't the question whether the board will accept something between 40 and 100?
Yeah, but I'm not going to let the board be run down, run, you know, go, be pushed into a direction that's false. I'm sorry, Jack, but that's a, that's a false argument. That's a false argument that if I give, I give you a 100-foot buffer and the whole thing dies.
Honestly, you're not going to tell me.
It's a question.
No, I'm not, but I'm not going to.
But you're doing it now. You say you're not going to let it.
I don't want him to say, if we do a 100-foot buffer, we're turning our back on this. Exactly not what's going to happen.
I thought I heard Dennis say something between 40 and 100.
We could go something between, I mean.
I, I guess.
You're not the only person with the same.
That's right, but I'm not going to let somebody claim something that's not true. I'm sorry, I won't do it.
But it means it's not true, man.
I'm, I'm sorry.
He's talking.
I don't know what you're talking.
I know, you're not listening to me.
Yeah, because you're not making sense.
All right.
What, what do you mean by that? I, I don't know what you mean.
So, so people are saying that they want to develop in this way, okay? I didn't make them buy the land, they weren't stuck with the land. You know, it's not, it's not, it's not a hardship that the town put on them, that they bought land that has wetlands on it, that's, that's small, that's configured in such a way that they have to, you know. It's not, it's not my fault that there wasn't other available land for their 14 units that they want to produce. It's a self-imposed.
But the table is, will the board accept something between 40 and 100?
You know, you can't, you can't say, I'm going to, you can't say, I'm going to waive something if you are making, if a developer is making a hardship on themselves, you shouldn't give them a variance, you shouldn't give them a waiver. I mean, it has to be real. I've done this for a bazillion years. I, I, you know, I, I just, I'm sorry. I, I, you know, I've never said no to Willow Bend.
No, and I, I just hope you appreciate.
Ever. I've always been super, super, super supportive.
Yeah.
And it's all been, it's all been kind of within the, the original project. I've let you do whatever you want. It's this piece that you're bringing in new land, I think it's, I think it's, it's a part of our bylaw that we need to look at, that, that it's, it's 1985 zoning. What the heck? You know? And, and the benefit that they're getting from 1985 zoning is huge. They can at least respect the 100-foot buffer that we had. That road is fast. That road, like, I did, that's why I went to the site visit, just to look at what a 100-foot looked like.
Well, we've been, I guess.
And you have wetlands all around you.
All right.
I, I, I mean, I, I honestly am kind of like, I want to hear from the Concom before I make any decision on this, and I don't even know what the process is for that. I mean, this is, this, this is a sensitive site. I mean, it, it flows right in, down into, you know, a very sensitive environmental way. And, you know, you tell me, and Matt, I believe you, that, that, you know, this is going to improve the environment. I'm just kind of, you know, hmm, I have a master's in environmental engineering, hmm, development is good for the environment. This is what other developers have come in and we've poked holes in that argument. It's kind of difficult. Now, if Concom studies it, and they say, absolutely, this is going to, but without a consultant, you know, telling me the nitrogen calculations, really studying it hard, that your plan is a net benefit, I can't buy that argument.
Which you have from Kevin Kline, professional engineer at Stantec, in your letter.
But that's not my consultant, that's yours. We didn't hire them. Do you know what I mean? So hasn't been peer reviewed by the town. I'm not saying he's done anything wrong.
You know, puts us in a difficult position where you don't believe our engineers, you don't believe the fire chief.
Right.
And, and, you know, we're just.
It's not that I don't believe the fire chief. Hold on. I'm, this board is responsible for safety and access.
Sorry, the fire department.
Right, but I might be more, I might have a slightly different opinion. It doesn't mean I don't believe them, okay?
Well, you're substituting your judgment on a fire safety issue for that of the fire department.
Right.
And it puts us in a difficult position trying to design a roadway when we have to guess what might satisfy a layperson on fire safety.
Oh, you had to guess? I wasn't clear?
Yes.
Okay, so when was I supposed to be clear?
I've asked, you know, several times if we could have, and again, I, I'm not trying to be arguing.
When you came, when you came with the cottage bylaw, what did I say?
Right.
What did I say?
A year, a year and a half ago, we engaged with this board.
What did I say? What did I say then?
You said you didn't like that proposal.
Why? Too many units on the site.
Right.
I've been clear from day one.
Well, okay, so maybe.
So, so stop telling me that I'm hiding.
All I got to say is, there's five-member board, and you need to get three people, vote for you, you get this.
It's just hard to design something that it's expensive, where we don't know what's going to.
You need a super majority.
Four, four.
You need four.
But I, I, I was clear, and I'm sorry you didn't listen.
Well, we listened.
That's not my, you came back with the same number of units.
So, Madam Chair, can I just?
I wish you.
Interject here for a second?
Sure.
You know, I, I've worked on both sides of the aisle, right? I've been, worked for clients and developers, and I've, I've represented, I represent, right now actively represent two other towns as their consulting engineer. And there's always a balance you have to strike between the developer wanting to develop and get as much profit and, and, and use, and highest and best use out of a property, and the benefit to the town and/or to compliance with the zoning bylaw. If there are waivers, there has to be something offered. There has to be a balance, I think I heard Jack say earlier. And it's up to them to demonstrate that balance. And it sounds to me like he was leaning in that direction, and I think we owe it to him and, and, and the project, just for the other, benefit of the other members of the board. To answer the question he started to ask, he wanted to just ask the other members of the board if there is a middle, middle room somewhere between 100-foot buffer and the 40-foot that they're presently offering. That's all he wanted to do so he could walk away, to think with his team about what alternate designs they could come back and present to the board. Because I think that's ultimately what you want.
So are you thinking that maybe he should do 20-foot increments?
So I, I don't think, what I'm thinking is, he shouldn't, he's already got your opinion. He's not asking for yours, Madam Chair, he's asking for theirs.
So I'm telling you.
That's all I think you should ask them to do.
That maybe he should have 20-foot increments and see what it looks like.
I think he's asking for the buffer, not the setbacks between buildings. That's, that's another comment you asked.
Yeah.
I don't think you missed that either. But I think it's worthwhile for them, him to hear from the other board members.
I think he did.
No, no, he didn't, Madam Chair.
I think Karen said she wasn't sure, she'd like to see some things. I think that Dennis is compromised.
See, somehow I'm not helping you by my answer.
And I think that, yeah, and I think that John says he would support 100-foot. So I think that they, and we're missing one person, so you, you don't know what they're going to say.
The town planners, speak on this again.
What I said was, I would.
I have nothing to add. I just, I, I support what he's saying. I haven't heard anyone speak.
I heard very clearly.
And we're all confused.
No, I'm very clear. John wants to.
You are clear, Mary. It's so difficult to sit here and endure this. I know you're the chair. It's frustrating. No one feels good about this.
No, I mean.
I think that John said he's okay with the 40-foot buffer.
Why don't you, why don't we let, why don't we let each member?
They already have.
Well, can we?
No.
Karen said, Karen said she'd like to see some conceptual plans. I think Dennis is very flexible on it.
And what I said was, I was, I agreed with Dennis. I'm willing to listen to something between 40 and 100.
Good.
Okay, sounds like Dennis, you are too. Karen, what about you?
Yes, yes. I heard that, Ed. I heard that.
Thank you.
If you, if, I can't tell you how does it, to, to approach this board and to design. You want me to say, do every 20 feet and have it, look at it? That's reasonable.
Again, I, I'm trying to be pragmatic. We have one meeting left to finish this. And you may say, well, we'll start all over. I don't know if my management will do that. We've been at this for a year and a half with this board. We've been at this for a year and a half with this board, it's not a criticism, it's an observation, we could do three single-family lots with septic system, that's the only as-of-right option. So, if we wanna do something creative for the town of Mashpee, if we wanna do something for the water quality, if we wanted, you know, do, do something to address the drainage, we have to go through this board with some other process, and we are trying very hard to do that, but we have one meeting left, and so the more direction we could get, the better guidance Matt can to bring something back.
What happened on March, the, the special meeting at the end of March, somebody wasn't?
It was continued.
Right, 'cause somebody wasn't available.
Correct. Is that our fault?
No, but.
Otherwise, listen, he's, they're putting forward a plan, otherwise we're gonna get three single-family homes.
Well, I don't think I care.
Is that what you want?
I mean, yep.
Is that what's best for them?
Yep, it is.
Well, I don't want that.
I don't either.
All right, so I think we're gonna continue, do we have anything on the, the agenda from May 3rd?
I have to think now.
I mean, we can start at 7:15, it wouldn't conflict with anything.